All right, welcome. Welcome to the Wednesday, June 2nd, Board of Supervisors of Monterey County. Our budget hearings. Could we get a roll call, please?
Good morning. Let the record reflect, all supervisors are present, with Supervisors Alejo and Lopez appearing via video conference, and Supervisors Root, Askew, Adams, and Phillips appearing in person.
I'm Maria Avila. Thank you for joining us today for our Spanish interpretation services. Could you make the announcement for those watching on Zoom? Thank you. For anyone watching us on YouTube or Facebook, we do have Spanish interpretation available if you're able to log on to Zoom. Our Zoom webinar ID number is 224-397-747. And we will get our meeting started with the Pledge of Allegiance. Charles McKee, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? All right, are there any additions or corrections today to our agenda?
There are no additions and corrections.
All right. Well, moving right along, we'll call for public comment for any item not on today's agenda. This would be for any issue or item that is not otherwise listed elsewhere on our agenda today. If you're on Zoom, you may raise your hand. If you're in the audience, you may approach the podium. Seeing no hands raised, we can close general public comments and continue on. Our first scheduled matter this morning is to adopt a resolution to establish a Section 115 Pension Trust administered by Public Agency Retirement Services and appoint our CAO as the plan administrator. I believe we have a brief presentation by Juan Pablo Lopez. Do we have Mr. Lopez on? Yep, all right, I'll pass the microphone over to you.
Hi, good morning, Chair Askew and Board of Supervisors. Your Board has made it a priority to address the county's growing pension liability that currently totals over $762 million. The CEO's office recommends the creation of an IRS Section 115 Pension Trust. The pension trust would serve as an investment vehicle to address the pension liability in the future. As part of the budget process this year, our office recommends the release of the compensated absences assignment with a current balance of about $8 million. We have chosen and recommend PARCE as our trust administrator. PARCE is the Public Agency Retirement Services, and their selection was based on their experience with California public agencies and their competitive fee structure. And Mitch Barker from PARCE is also available for any questions regarding the establishment of the pension trust. Also included in this resolution is the pension liability policy, which will serve as a guide for addressing the pension liability in the future. And it also makes it a point for us to prioritize it during the budget process this year and all future budget processes.
Great, thank you very much. I will bring it back to the Board. I see Supervisor Alejo has some comments.
Yeah, first of all, I do want to ask Juan Pablo if you could just elaborate on how would we get an annual report on this pension trust fund?
So, all of our trusts, you know, we would work with an actuary to get a report on our funding status. So, we would, we would work with the PARCE liability reports that we have, and we can provide a status to the Budget Committee and to the Board regarding how much our investment or needs have been in the future, and what our plan is to pay down the liability every year.
Right, great. Just to have an annual report, I think, would be great. I just wanted to comment, Madam Chair, this is one of the hard topics of our day, dealing with future pension liabilities that are very substantial, obviously, from the number that Juan Pablo just gave. But I think this Board would be doing something, I think, that will be looked back many years from now, perhaps decades, that we did the right thing to start this, to address it, knowing that the liability is only increased if we don't start doing something to try to plan for that. And I think it is our fiduciary duty to start putting some money away to deal with that. The state in its May revise put billions down to deal with its pension liabilities for its state workers. We don't have, we didn't get any of that state money, but we could start putting some of our local funds to deal with this. This, I think, will be a crisis down the road unless we start acting today to put money aside to be able to pay that liability for our, for our county employees. So, I think I strongly support this. It's something that the Budget Committee asked for, and I want to thank our staff for researching this, coming up with some proposal, and I'm glad our CAO is also very supportive of this today. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. I saw Dwayne Woods' hand raised as well. Dwayne, do you want to weigh in on this as well?
Yeah, I just wanted to respond to the Supervisor's question and advise that at the budget end of year report, which we do at the end of every fiscal year after the numbers become available, we'll create a section in that report that outlines the progress of this 115 trust and make sure that's included there for an annual report back to the Board.
Great, thank you. Supervisor Adams?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, as well, am very supportive of this. I think it's really great that we have a proactive approach and now policy to address it. One of the questions that I do have probably for Dwayne is, do we know if the unfunded liability estimates consider the age of our workforce and the timing of likely retirements in the next five to 10 years?
Indeed, it has a, it's an actuarial determined number that takes into lifespans, age, the rate of pay, expected benefit payments, all of those. And part of our funding policy, which we'll be working with the Auditor Controller on, will be developed throughout the period of time in next year. So, we'll be bringing that back to the Board also. And as we do that, we'll be also making sure we pay special attention to that, those actuarial reports that are presented.
Thank you.
Great, any other comments or questions from my colleagues? It does appear that we need to take it. Wonderful, thank you, Supervisor Alejo, and I'll second that motion. Is there any public comment on this item? Anyone on Zoom would need to raise your hand so that we can call on you. Anyone in the audience may approach the podium. Seeing no public comments, we'll bring it back to the Board. We have a motion from Alejo, a second from Askew, and we'll take a roll call vote.
Supervisor Alejo?
Aye.
Supervisor Phillips?
Aye.
Supervisor Lopez?
Aye.
Supervisor Adams?
Aye.
And Chair Supervisor Root, Askew.
Aye. Thank you. The motion carries. Next up, we have an item to adopt a resolution for the fiscal year 2021, 2022 GAN appropriation limits. And I will welcome Becky Gong from our Auditor, Chief Deputy from our Auditor Controller's Office to make a brief presentation.
Good morning. Can you all hear me okay?
We can, welcome. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you. Supervisor Wendy Root Askew and the members of the Board of Supervisors, my name is Becky Gong, Chief Deputy Auditor Controller. On behalf of the Auditor Controller's Office, I'm here today to ask the Board of the Supervisors to adopt a resolution for the fiscal year 21, 22 GAN appropriation limits. This resolution is brought forward pursuant to Article 13B of the California Constitution, which requires appropriation limits to be adopted at a regular scheduled governance meeting. The appropriation limits have been calculated by the Auditor Controller's Office for the four governed jurisdictions determined to be subject to the provisions of Article 13B and are shown in the attached schedule provided to you. The documentation and calculations are available for public inspection in the Auditor Controller's Office. The general and library funds computer appropriation limit is $772,602,925. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there any, are there any questions or comments from my colleagues on the Board? Is there any public comment on our GAN appropriation limits today?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Right, we have a motion from Alejo, a second from Phillips. Seeing no public comment, we'll close public comment and bring it back for a roll call vote. Thank you.
Supervisor Alejo?
Aye.
Supervisor Phillips?
Aye.
Supervisor Lopez? Supervisor Lopez?
Aye.
Supervisor Adams?
Aye.
And Chair Supervisor Root, Askew.
Aye, thank you. The motion carries. All right, moving in, we will now open the public hearing to consider our 2021, 22 recommended budget. I'd like to welcome Charles McKee, our County Administrative Officer, for some opening comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Really appreciate the opportunity to provide opening comments for the 21, 22 fiscal year budget. As you all can see, it's, it's, it's a heavy document. It's a big document, and it takes a lot of work for this document to be created that provides for you, the Board of Supervisors, the blueprint as we're going to move forward in 21, 22. Sorry about that. So, as everyone knows, 2021 fiscal year was quite a momentous, momentous year for everyone in many respects. We had sacrifices, both human and financial, across our community, across our country, across the world. And there are obviously many heroic stories, and we applaud all those people who stood up and, and stood out during the, during the year. There were those who stood up in ways that we will never know, because they did it in an unsung way. They did it without accolades. But we know that they're out there, and we know there are many in our community who did the same thing, both in personal ways to stand up to help others and in financial ways to step up and help others. We, as the county, had many of those stars within our own organization who, who never left their jobs and kept doing the work, as well as, you know, stepped forward to help others who were less fortunate. And we, as a county, we also spent a lot financially, both with our businesses. They spent a lot financially to try and stay alive. We, as the county government, spent a lot of our own dollars, the dollars that the taxpayers trust us with to use to help stem the tide of COVID-19 and make sure that we can stay on a sound financial footing while also helping others. The, there were many county employees who, as I said, never went home. They stayed working, whether they were working on the road crew or, or so, or social services, doing child protective services or adult protective services, the health department. The sheriff's deputies kept patrolling. There are, you know, countless others who stood up and stood out during this past year. And, you know, we have to recognize that those are the core services that we do as a county, that the Board of Supervisors appropriates money for every year to help those in our community that need help, but also to provide those services that everybody expects from, from county government. To create this budget for this year, the, the recommended budget at this point, there's a lot of work that goes on behind the scenes, tremendous amount of work, far beyond my abilities or skills to even understand. There's management analysts and their finance, finance managers and their, their assistants and clerks and secretaries and their department heads and their folks in the Budget Division. They all stood up to make this document and do the work that they have to do every year. And doing it this year was obviously quite a challenge, because many people were not working in the office and they didn't have all the same resources, but some were. But there was a lot of toil behind the scenes to create this document, and it's a lot of hard work. And I want to recognize those who, who do that work every day, in and out, that it takes, it takes basically a year after you adopt the budget to start creating the next budget, and that's what they do. There's, this doc, this document is a blueprint, as I said, and while there might be some monies in here right now that come in from federal and state funds, those monies are not going to last forever, and we have to learn how to wean off those monies as we go through this next fiscal year and the following fiscal years thereafter. And Mr. Woods and his staff have created a way for the Board to approve, to make that happen, so that we're, so that we're financially prudent as we move forward. So, what I would say today is we, we are very sound in our human capital, our human resources that we have in Monterey County, both the community and in county government. And we're very, we have very strong financial policies that the Board approved that we want to make sure remain. They're in, they're in this document. There are the financial policies that guide the, excuse me, guide the county in how we're going to, to appropriate and spend the money. And so, I would encourage the Board to stay the course, to help those who are less fortunate in our county, provide the core financial services, but also maintain prudent financial policies as you go forward. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Charles. And thank you for leading, leading the ship this past year. It's been unprecedented, is, is I think the word. Next up, I'd like to invite our Budget Committee members. I'll start with Supervisor Alejo, who is the Chair of our Budget Committee, for some introductory comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As Chair of the Budget Committee, I first want to recognize not only our CAO for his leadership this past year, but also a very competent and professional budget staff who have worked very hard on preparing this year's $1.7 billion budget. We do have some of the best minds when it comes to our budget, and they're giving us their best professional suggestions to craft this year's historic budget, which is our county's largest yet in our history. I also want to thank our department heads that continue to work hard to stay on budget and advocate for their departmental needs. But we all know that this year's budget is an unprecedented time in our nation's history, but also in our county's history. As we transition into our economic, community, and familial recovery after this devastating pandemic, so many of our residents endured and survived so much illness, and we have lost 385 of our beloved residents, which I take to heart each day as if they were my own lost family. This year's budget has, has a completely different focus on using our budget as a way to help our families, businesses, and communities more strongly rebound after so much hardship and suffering these last 14 months. Supervisor Askew and I are members of the Budget Committee, and we continue to serve as watchdogs over scarce budget dollars, and it's our critical county function to maintain a balanced budget. We recognize that we have significantly rising costs to provide core county services, and we have increasing liabilities that we just acted on to better address by creating that pension trust just a few minutes ago. We have some promising trends in property tax, TOT, and cannabis funds, but we know that this could quickly change in the years ahead. I hope at the end of this process, though, we can, we truly prioritize the needs of our children, families, workers, and our important industries, including agriculture and hospitality. That should also include achieving work on addressing our digital divide crisis. It would be a shame that our county was a center of a national conversation on digital inequality after the image of those two little girls in East Salinas, and if we don't fund some projects to accomplish and make progress in our county this coming year. I thank all our community voices who have and continue to weigh in on behalf of our youth, families, and businesses. Monterey County has been resilient during the worst of times, and we, we have gone from being one of the hardest hit areas in our nation to being one of the most improved by having some of the lowest rates today out of 400 metro areas. Over 70% of our farm workers have had at least one vaccination, which is something we can all be proud of and hasn't been accomplished anywhere else in our nation. Today, we just moved into the yellow tier that demonstrates our progress as a county by cooperating and working together. Monterey County's story has been one of strength, and our strength will continue in the months ahead by achieving a just budget that reflects the needs of our families, businesses, and communities to get through this pandemic and its aftermath. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor Alejo. I also have a few comments to share as a member of the Budget Committee, and just sort of framing out the way that I am approaching and thinking about this year's budget. And then I'd like to hear from the rest of the Board as well before we move forward. So, you know, I, I see the work that our county workers are doing, especially this year, with the commitment to ensuring, and, and want to let them know that we and I have a commitment to ensuring that we're paying competitive wages. So, as we consider our 21, 22 budget, we do need to prioritize our workforce to ensure that we have robust public health and social service systems ready to respond to the next crisis. This means reserving funds so that we can continue to negotiate competitive salaries for all of our hardworking county employees. I also want to recognize in the budget that, as it's been prepared and recommended, that some of the districts, District Four and District One specifically, don't always benefit from the significant investments in infrastructure that we, as a county, have mandates to deliver on. But we do have significant needs for services that care for families and children, families and children, many of whom who live in the more densely populated incorporated cities. The services that we need to prioritize and fund at similar levels to physical infrastructure, these are services that we need to prioritize and fund at similar levels to the physical infrastructure needs elsewhere in the county. There's one sentence in the budget book on page 492 that really, to me, pulls out, that highlights, highlights my thinking about how we approach this year's budget. It states that "The COVID-19 health emergency exposed inadequate local systems and resources brought about by years of underinvestment in core public health functions, including communicable disease prevention and control, data surveillance, and a public health laboratory. As part of the health response efforts, the federal government made funding available for public health, which has helped to prop up temporary infrastructure. However, further ongoing investments will be required to maintain and enhance our local public health capacity and infrastructure." Not mentioned in that statement, but for me, one of the things that really struck, struck me and high, remains one of the areas that was uncovered as a significant need is our ability as a county to communicate with our public and the expectation that the public has for how the county communicates information back out into the community. I want to thank all of our public for participating in this budget process, the emails that we've received, the phone calls that we've received, the text messages that I continue to receive this morning. I take seriously your voices and the values that you represent. This is your budget, and we are here to work for you, and we need to include your voice in the preparation of how we spend your tax dollars. So, I would like to invite my colleagues to take a few minutes to share their framework and values, their big picture priorities for this year, and remind everyone, as we move forward through each department today, that our county staff is listening very carefully to hear three voices, either in support or in opposition to what's been recommended in order to develop the final budget. So, please don't hesitate to speak up if there's something that you want to see funded. We've got the whole team in the, in the, behind the scenes, listening and counting to three to determine what items they will be either removing from the recommended budget or what items they will be adding into the final budget. So, with that, I will pass the microphone over to my colleagues. Let's see here, we'll start with Supervisor Phillips.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I concur in just about everything everybody has said, in a large degree. I mean, this was one hell of a year for us, but even more so for the people out there. I mean, we, we did a heck of a job. We kept all our, we didn't furlough any of our people. We kept, we kept all our people working, and that wasn't what was happening out through our community. So, and this county stepped up, and we put a lot of money from our strategic reserves. We almost exhausted the entire cannabis account to get out there and do the things that needed to be done. If, fortunately, we received state funds and, and federal funds to help get us back on track. And if we haven't had that, we would have a lot different conversation today than we are having, because we would be looking about furloughs and layoffs and other things that would have to be done in order to keep financially viable. But this money that we got has to be used, by definition, has to be used strictly for certain things. And it has to be used strategically. And I'm reluctant to see us take that and use that to develop new programs versus what we can do for filling the gaps and, and using it strategically for, for one-shot things. Because once you start funding a program, like we see today, we have another number of requests of things that we funded once. But once you do that, they're coming back asking for funding the next year, as I would if I helped start a program. So, I, I, my emphasis would be to use those things to, what we can do to get the economy back where it was. Especially our hospitality community got hit harder. And so, I want to see us reserve some funds to, besides the set-asides, to see us start using some of those funds to stimulate the economy and get things open back up, including, I want to see some more money going into Laguna Seca to try to get the track where it should be. I want to see us make sure that we have adequate support for our law enforcement as we go forward in, in the budget, in all aspects of it. And I think the emphasis that some of them are putting on early childhood education and childcare, doing what we can so we can get childcare and get those people out of the house and back to work that need it in order to get the childcare. So, those are some of my priorities. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Supervisor Adams?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before I make my comments, I want to draw attention to the document of the budget itself and the beautiful pictures that we have on the document this year. And as I show this to you, I want to give a special thank you to the Padre Trail Camera Club for providing the photos that we were able to use on this year's budget. Each district gets a chance to do this, and this is the fifth district's turn, so a special thank you to them. So many thank you's, but specifically, I really want to thank Charles McKee, because this has been, as Supervisor Askew said, just an unexpected turn of events for you. And it's been very, very difficult, and I, I just really respect your showing up every day, because that's kind of what it takes to begin. And the same to you, County Council, as well, to give a deft hand to lead us through all of the things that we've been through, and I truly thank you for that. I think that, to me, this is one of the most important meetings that we have all year, because this is the most important responsibility that we, as a Board, have. Budgets are statements of values that leaders have for their community. So, it's really important for us today to put aside any political or personal disagreement, to work together to ensure that our decisions are what is best for all of the people in our county. This past year? Thank you. This past year has been one of great challenge and uncertainty, and I'm very proud of how the county and the staff of the county have stepped up to the plate to address the pandemic. The residents of our community have suffered greatly. We've had tens of thousands of cases of COVID and almost 400 of residents who've lost their lives. We've seen businesses close, we've seen the economy fail, and many people have been laid off from their jobs. This has been much for us to grieve. As we move into today's hearings, there is optimism ahead. As an example, our county budget could be facing a $40 million gap, were it not for the bold steps taken by the state and the federal government. We're so fortunate to have been designated to receive $84 million over several years in federal funds and possibly more funding coming from the state to address COVID-related setbacks. My hope and intention today is to hear from my colleagues and my community on their priorities for the coming year. My promise to my colleagues, community, and to myself is to keep my mind and my heart open and rely on data and instinct to form the best decisions for the people of Monterey County. With that, I believe that we're going to have a great budget, and it will be up to us to make those decisions. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Supervisor Lopez?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just appreciate the opportunity to share a few words at the top of this budget. It's been a different budget year than any that I've ever expected. It's been a different budget year than any that I've ever expected. I want to thank really the entire county family for getting us through the last year and I see some unique investments in this year's budget, but overall, I want to really stay focused this year on the proposal that was put forward by staff along with some requests. I know up until yesterday, I was receiving some very high-dollar requests just kind of flying through the email, but really what we're dealing with today is focusing on a budget that helps Monterey County recover from the bottom to the top and really making sure that the investments that we make are positioning us for long-term success coming out of this crazy pandemic. And so as we continue to find ways that we can help our different economy sectors rebound, know that this isn't the end either. We know that the efforts that all my colleagues spoke about from the state and the feds continue and so we are also tracking what's happening at those levels and potential future impacts that could again offset some of the requests that we've seen and heard. And so in terms of today's process, you know, obviously I appreciate the fact that we're going to try to move through this as expeditiously as possible while still allowing for everyone to have their voice heard and making sure that all of our different districts make, get some sort of an understanding of the uniqueness of their needs. And I do believe that each district has unique needs, including the third like any other. But as we, as we continue through this process, I just appreciate everybody's willingness to help us get to numbers hopefully higher than three in agreement as we stay flexible and open-minded in working through some of the requests and ideas. But overall for me today, the focus is going to be much as Supervisor Phillips shared, focusing on making sure that we're creating, you know, the opportunity that we need without creating long-term expectations of the county in terms of our budget, knowing that at the top of this meeting, we've made some moves on pensions due to demands that are continuing to increase. And so making sure that we continue to keep an eye on the long-term rather than just on tomorrow is strictly, is strictly, is one of those things that I keep strict in my mind in terms of a line that I want to make sure that we continue to walk. And so for me, that's part of the focus, that's part of today's driving message is making sure that we're making decisions that appropriate one-time funds for one-time use as much as possible. And with that, I'm happy to turn it back to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you Supervisor Lopez. With that, we will move along to our CAO presentation on the recommended budget. For those who are watching online, I do just want to briefly review the process for today. What we're going to do is we're going to start with this presentation overview of the recommended budget by our budget staff, following which we will, let's see here, following which we will open for public comment, which I'm not seeing here on our, is it right under five? Yep, sorry. So we're going to start with our presentation by budget staff and then we'll move in and we'll allow for public comment. Public comment, this will be public comment for everything on the agenda, everything that we'll be discussing, every different department. So be prepared for public comment coming up shortly. For Zoom, we would just ask that you raise your hand so that we can call on you. If you're in the audience, be prepared to step up and speak. Following public comment, we'll be going through departmental presentations. And as you can see on the agenda, some departments will be having a very specific presentation about what's in their budget. Each supervisor will have the opportunity to weigh in briefly, following each of the department presentations. After we finish the presentations of departments, we'll move through a list of departments who don't have anything to present, but it will be a chance for anything that's in the recommended budget that the Board would like to pull out or comment on or highlight or change to speak up at that point. At the end of the day, we'll give each supervisor a chance to make any final, final comments, ask any final questions. We'll then send our budget staff back to figure out what all they heard and bring back a final summary of the direction that they, that they took today in listening for three voices. And then we will have a final vote just to confirm that that was in fact the direction of the majority of the Board on each of the specific items. And all of the additional special districts will vote, will open and close all of those meetings at the end of the day. So just process-wise, that's how we'll be proceeding, but the opportunity for public comment will be after this presentation by our CAO office on the recommended budget. And with that, I will welcome Dwayne Woods and Ezekiel Vega to give a presentation about our 2122 recommended budget.
Thank you Chair Askew. My name is Dwayne Woods with the County Ministeriate of Office and I would first like to show my appreciation and gratitude to the Board of Supervisors for providing direction, guidance, and vision to the entire county organization. And today was a good example of that with the Board adopting the creation of a 115 trust to deal with the county's lingering and long-term unfunded pension liability. That single adoption of that policy and that trust will be a beacon in the future that shows that this county is committed to sustainability. Sustainability is for financial and for the services of the community. And in order to have services to the community, we need to have a foundation of financial stability. And that's what this budget is really all about. Having said that, we work closely with the Budget Committee and the Board to understand what that policy guidance is and what that direction is. Along with that, I would like everyone to understand that this document, this budget, and all of the information contained herein is not the product of one person, it's the product of multiple people, lots of hard work from all the way from parks to hospitals to roads to public safety, to administrative services, to water services, water resources, as also as a piece of this, although their budget will come at a later point today. And health, there are a variety of services that this county offers to the public. Without those services, the public would not be in such a great shape or resilient as it is today. Going forward, I think it's going to be paramount that this organization prepare for a future that is going to look a lot different than our past. The use of the federal funds is one of the areas that really is integrated in this budget. Having said that, we do need to understand that these federal funds that come through either the CARES Act or the ARPA Act are one-time in nature. So while we will use them to sustain programs going forward, we need to have a strategy in which to make, make sure our, our systems and our programs are not reliant on those because those funds will diminish over the next three years. So having said that, there are really two components of this year's presentation. One component is the actual budget itself of 1.7 billion and, and all of the programs contained therein. But another component is also the determination of the policy direction that the Board will provide about the use of the $84 million in ARPA funds. And there are four major categories in which we can use those ARPA funds. Those are either in sewer, water, or broadband infrastructure projects, economic resiliency, which are obviously our economy as well as the world's economy has been hampered or impacted by the pandemic. We can use it in response. The third bucket is the response to the pandemic, which we've been very heavily engaged in the last year and a half. And then we can also use it to make sure that we create a resilient workforce and that goes to the economic recovery. Having said that, as you'll see later on in the presentation, in the buckets that we described, we are not allocating all of those funds. The last bucket is the revenue backfill. That is where our economy of the county, the revenue has been impacted. And in those funds, it creates wide latitude and flexibility for us to use for county programs. And that's another segment that we're using the ARPA funds. If it were not for that segment, the discussion today, as was mentioned earlier by Supervisor Phillips, would be an extremely different conversation. We would not be talking about maintaining levels of service, we would not be talking about in certain areas of increasing levels of service, we would be talking about across the board reducing levels of services coming out of a pandemic. So these funds are intricate in our recovery, but they are one-time. Having said that, as Mr. Vega goes through the presentation, we hope that the public really engages and advises of their needs, their wants and desires, and then we will, as Chair has advised, as staff, we will listen to the Board and bring back a budget that we believe the Board has directed for adoption. Having said that, I'm going to turn this over to Ezekiel with one last comment. The budget staff are absolutely outstanding with their Budget Director Ezekiel Vega at the helm and the small but mighty staff we have in the Budget Office. The way that they have performed over the last year and a half through this pandemic has been astounding and exceeded what I ever would have imagined. And I just really want to express my appreciation to that small but mighty group of folks. And thank you very much, Mr. Vega. I will turn it over to you so that you can get into the actual presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Woods, and good morning, members of the Board, members of the community and staff members. Again, I just want to thank the budget staff for the hard work, also the finance staff throughout the county and the Department Heads for their collaboration throughout this process. So with that, let's move on to the presentation itself. As you know, every budget starts with some projections at the beginning of the fiscal year and those projections unfortunately for our county and throughout the nation and many counties show a negative picture to start with. So on this slide, you see that initially we were projecting a gap of approximately $40 million. I think Supervisor Adams had made an allusion to that with her opening remarks. And that was the case that we were facing this current fiscal year. Fortunately, as indicated also by others, we were able to receive some one-time funding in the form of CARES revenue during the current fiscal year and also we are expected to receive also some ARPA funds for the upcoming fiscal years. Otherwise, we will be taking a much more difficult situation for the county as I already alluded. So that situation on this chart, you can see that revenue overall was, is projected to be almost flat with the small increases over the next fiscal year and also into the two outages in the forecast. And to drive the point again, that during the current fiscal year for 2021, we will have been in a much, much worse situation and we not received some of the CARES revenues that we received during the current fiscal year. Even though we have had some challenges on the revenue aspect of our operations, projections for the county, as you can see on this slide, you see that actually property taxes continue to be projected to increase over the next few fiscal years. However, we have to continue to monitor how this important revenue stream for the county actually does over the fiscal years, start looking at early signs of potential decline as these revenue sources and property taxes accounts for a significant amount of the discretionary revenue that the Board of Supervisors and the county has available for the provision of services. Just to give a little bit of context, as indicated before, the overall county budget is approximately $1.7 billion for the upcoming fiscal year. But out of that $1.7 billion, only approximately $250 million or so is for discretionary revenue. That's the type of money or that what the Board of Supervisors has, a little more discretion as to how and where to direct those specific resources. A lot of the other revenue is program revenue that is specifically dedicated for a specific purpose and it may come from the federal government, the state, and so on and so forth. So when you look at it in the terms of context, this 180 million or so, $87 million for the next fiscal year compared to the 250 million represents plus to 70% of the overall revenue that we have discretion over as a county on how to continue to fund ongoing important services. So I think it is important to continue to monitor this revenue trend and see how the overall property taxes are impacted as we start to emerge from the pandemic. Similarly, another revenue source that is important for the county is the transient occupancy tax. As you can see on the, this slide, initially when the budget was being prepared, we were still in the middle of the pandemic. So we were being very conservative on the projections of transient occupancy tax. And for fiscal year 2021, initially we were estimating that we will have a significant decrease on that revenue and then gradually start going, growing the revenue as we emerge from the pandemic. I think it'll be, this will be one of those revenue sources that will be more and more sensitive to what happens with the economy. So we have to continue to monitor it and ensure that if any swings, large swings happen, then we'll be able to make specific adjustments as we move forward with our budget. Another important revenue that also helps to fund services is, has been cannabis over the last few fiscal years. And the slide in front of you focuses on the cannabis assignment, which particularly was used actually to be able to respond to the pandemic. And as you recall, also the Board of Supervisors was bold in implementing and approving services to respond to the pandemic during the current fiscal year. And as you can see, we were estimating approximately $27 million of cannabis assignment that had grown over time. But fiscal year 2021 and the pandemic progress, then the Board was, saw the need to invest a lot of those dollars in responding to the pandemic. So right now, the cannabis assignment revenue is projected to be at zero. That's prior to any type of reimbursements that we may get from federal sources or any type of sources. But that just tells you that yes, the pandemic was real, this pandemic was affecting the community in significant ways, but also the response from the Board of Supervisors was bold and was deliberate to make sure that we, as a county, were able to respond to the pandemic. And I think that is also reflected in the low numbers that are in front of our county. On the, on the flip side, comparatively speaking from revenue to expenditures, some of the reasons why you had seen that potential deficit of $40.7 million coming into fiscal year 2021, 22, a significant part of that was right, the rising pension cost. And I think that the Board recognized that and was able to today approve that 115 Pension Trust report where we are going to establish that Pension Trust to start addressing this unfunded liability that is a significant component of those rising pension costs. And as indicated before, it is estimated that the unfunded liability as for the upcoming fiscal year will be $762 million. Just to put that into context, that's more than one year's of the annual general fund budget on a year-to-year basis. But with the bold decisions that the Board of Supervisors have made today establishing the 115 trust, we believe that the county is well positioned to start addressing this growing unfunded liability this upcoming year and also into the years to come. In addition to pension costs, workers' compensation and general liability costs also continue to grow and have continued to create some strength into the resources for the county to, for the provision of services. So this is another area that as a county, we will have to continue to address, monitor, and start addressing to make sure that we start addressing the ongoing costs and establish a strategy to ensure that those costs remain flat or start reducing. Another aspect that continues to also affect the overall cost structure for the county is the health insurance cost. As you can see in the slide in front of you, you see this continuing growth where in fiscal year 13, 14, we were paying as a county $38.4 million, but by fiscal year 21, 22, we are, we're estimating that the county will have to pay about $62.5 million approximately. So that is almost a double, double the increase in that over that period of span. So it is something that as a county, we're going to have to continue trying to develop strategies to figure out the best way to start to curbing down the growth on this cost driver that is creating potential imbalances in the upcoming budgets. Another aspect on the expenditure side also is the ongoing growth of contributions to outside agencies. That is also something that continues to, to grow over the next few fiscal years. As you know, the contribution to outside agencies, it is driven by agreements that the county has established over the last few years to share is TOT and also its 172 revenue with outside agencies. But it is something that just continue, we continue, have to continue to monitor and try to figure out the best way to ensure that those costs continue to be monitored and to ensure that we develop a strategy to be able to control those costs as well. So with that, that was just overall the background of where we were prior to the development of the budget and what we were facing in order to develop the budget now. At this point, we're moving into the actual recommended budget, what is included in the overall budget. So the overall recommended budget uses as a form of background, begins with the Department's preparing forecast. Some of the information that you saw in the preceding slides represents a lot of the information on the work that was done by Departments and also the budget staff on trying to determine where we were prior to the beginning of the budget. After that, initial budget, baseline budget is prepared by After that, an initial budget, baseline budget is prepared by departments where ongoing resources are matched with ongoing expenditures. And then if there is an imbalance between ongoing revenues and expenditures, then departments need to prepare augmentations. Those augmentations are the ones that are presented to the CAO's budget team based on priorities provided by departments. We review those augmentation requests and then based on the overall prioritization of departments, overall goals, the board of supervisors, then we try to present and match those augmentations with a specific funding. So a lot of the discussion today is going to be focused on those augmentation requests or those funding gaps that were identified after the baseline budget was presented. Altogether, that represents a requested budget. And another requested budget, then as, as overall as a team on the budget team, we review along with the CAO and departments what the overall priorities are for the board supervisors and present the recommended budget, which encompasses all of these elements. So the recommended budget use in general is approximately one point six billion or almost one point seven billion across all funds. The general fund budget is a portion of all that one point six billion dollars, amounts to seven hundred and forty-four, almost seven hundred and forty-five million dollars in revenue. And there is also some one-time utilization of fund balance during this fiscal year. A lot of that, a big majority is for four point one million dollars in departmental fund balance, restricted to a specific uses for a specific programs within the departments. We also are recommending the utilization of two point seven five million cannabis assignment. Most of that, or all of that, had actually already been approved by the board of supervisors. For our resources projects, I'm, I'm adding to one point five million dollars and also for the shared radius of one point five million dollars. As indicated before, those two projects have been previously approved by the board supervisors, uh, the cannabis assignment. And we had set aside those funds for that specific purpose that the board approved those funds for. In addition to that, also the recommended budget includes the use of one point six million on information technology assignment that is specifically earmarked for capital projects for information, for information technology. Overall, the recommended budget supports five thousand four hundred and eighty-nine FTEs. That's a growth of almost ninety-two FTEs compared to, to the last fiscal year. And most of that position growth is attributed to NMC since they had to ramp up in response to the pandemic and also the overall demand that the community has for health services. In addition to that, ARPA funds also have changed, as indicated before, the overall county outlook. We know that we have received this one-time funding that is a significant amount of eighty-four point three million dollars as an allocation as of today. The county has actually applied for the allocation from the federal government, and we have received half of that allocation in the current fiscal year. The other half of these ARPA funds will be coming approximately twelve months from this month, so sometime in May, at the end of May, early June, we will be receiving the other half of these funds coming into the county. But the recommended budget does include some utilization of ARPA funds to help the county get out of this pandemic and also start providing, continue to provide some of the core services that are necessary. And when we have a discussion on ARPA funds in the upcoming slides, you will see further how that plan or how, how some of those funds included in the ARPA fund are incorporated as part of the recommended budget. The fiscal environment, actually, prior to coming to this budget, actually, the county was seeing continuous growth for eleven years. That was the longest in the U.S. history. But obviously, due to the pandemic, this growth ended abruptly. Discretionary revenue had continued to grow over the last few fiscal years, but you had seen a trend where revenues were not growing as fast as expenditures were. So we were seeing that the county was going to experience some imbalance. And then lastly, as part of the fiscal environment, discretionary revenue for the county, all of it has already been allocated for the, under recommended budget, with the exception of approximately one point three to one point four million dollars from cannabis revenues, cannabis revenue store that has not been allocated and is available for the board of supervisors to fund specific programs that we believe is appropriate or to allow that funding to go into the assignment to look for priorities going forward. So overall, the county budget as indicated before is one point six six million dollars, approximately one point seven billion dollars overall for the county. And the, the budget as presented is a statutorily balanced budget. Of that portion, the overall for the general fund is approximately seven hundred and fifty-four million dollars in expenditures and, and as indicated before, seven hundred and forty-five million dollars in revenue. And the information that you see on the left-hand side of the slide, I already went over some of that information as to the utilization of fund balance in, from certain departments, cannabis, and then the assignment. So in the recommended budget, as indicated before, we had initially identified a certain number of unfunded needs that the partners presented. Overall, departments had presented an unfunded need of approximately forty-three point seven million dollars, affecting approximately also one hundred and twenty-eight point six five FTEs. Of those one hundred and twenty-eight point six five FTEs, some of them were field, some of them were vacant, and then some of them were, were also new positions that were being requested. The majority of these requests or this funding need was in the general fund, with most of it going to about forty-three point one million dollars. So providing further detail into the actual positions or the requested augmentations from departments that affected positions, you can see that out of the total request of forty-three point seven million dollars, approximately twelve point five million dollars was affecting positions. And of the twelve point five million dollars affecting positions, approximately two million dollars was being requested to maintain or sustain existing field positions of twenty-three point one five positions. Also, request of four point, almost four point five million dollars, which has been requested for new positions, and six million dollars for vacant positions. After we look at the overall funding available to be able to, to look at this funding augmentations, did I hear a question from someone? I think I heard someone speaking, no? Okay. I just want to make sure that I don't miss that. So as we looked at the overall needs submitted by the department for unfunded needs and the available funding, we tried to develop a strategy that will best align those needs with the available funding. And as you can see in the table in front of you, the, what is part of the recommended budget is restoring all those field positions that were being requested. In addition to that, also restoring thirty-two vacant positions and also the recommendation to add approximately thirty-one new positions. The cost of all that, or all the different position-related augmentations is, is included as part of the recommended budget, amounts to seven and a half million dollars. In addition to that, also, there's a recommendation to fund fifteen point three million dollars in capital cost, as indicated before, the two point four million dollars for the sheriff, one point two five million of that is for the radios that were approved by the board of supervisors previously. And also a part of that is one point two million dollars for the jail backup sewer system for the new jail and one point six million dollars for the information technology projects funded by the own IT assignment funding. And then eleven point two million dollar, dollars for capital projects overall for a lot of parks, for sewer and water projects that will be funded out of the ARPA funding if approved by the board. And there will be a further slide that will provide the specific details as to the capital price that have been proposed as part of the, the recommended budget. In addition to that, we're also recommending funding two point four million dollars for other status quo programs to maintain levels of service. New programs at three point nine, another, other category of services at five hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars. So overall, the recommended augmentations include twenty-nine point eight million dollars in augmentations being funded for the recommended budget. This slide provides further detail into the specific positions by department that are being recommended for funding. It is worth noting that the positions social services, for example, were all funded by departmental revenue. So that had no impact overall in the bottom line for the county. And also, it is important to note that the positions for emergency communications are funded by a transfer and from the CAO's budget in the amount of two hundred and fifty-seven thousand. But the department also brought in, in addition to five hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. So overall, that's the overall cost for the positions themselves. And that's not clearly evident on the tables. That's why I just wanted to make sure that I had a note about that for you to, to refer to that. In addition to the position-related augmentations, we also have recommended augmentations indicated for, for capital projects. This gives you a little more of detail on the specific projects that are being recommended for funding. For example, under the CAO's office, we're recommending a Laguna Seca water project for five hundred thousand for the upcoming fiscal year. The overall cost for that project specifically is one point nine million dollars. So we are requesting the utilization of ARPA funds for that specific water project, which five hundred thousand of, which will be appropriated during the current fiscal year. And then the next biggest component to that is a ten point seven million dollars for park sewer and water capital projects. And specific details about those ten point seven million dollars will be provided in a slight, upcoming slide. And then the capital projects for the sheriff, coroner, we have discussed us before in previous slides. And then the information technologies projects also have been discussed on previous slides. But this slide gives you a little more detail into what those specific projects are for information technology. In addition to what we have seen so far, also recommended augmentations for new programs are shown here on this table in summary by the different departments. So as you can see, various departments actually are being recommended for funding for new programs, including the health department, public works, and then the health department. So more details about those new specific new programs that are being recommended for funding is broken down into this slide in case there is any specific questions for programs. Departments will be available to answer any specific questions that you may have as to what these new programs are doing and what is the benefit, benefit overall for the community. And in fact, you will be hearing from a presentation from some of the departments on some of these slides today. For example, the health department, public works, social services, also the sheriff, even though they are not getting funding for any funding, you'll get the presentation from the sheriff. And also the CAO's IGLA division will be making a presentation. So they will be able to provide specific details about, about anything that you have questions on related to this list of new programs. So how were we able to fund all these different augmentations? As indicated before, we were facing a significant, significant challenge during the current year. But we were fortunate enough that we did receive some funding from the federal government as part of the ARPA funding. So the way that we were able to fund this twenty-nine point eight million dollars, a large portion of that is coming from ARPA funding. Ten point nine million dollars of that, that you see in the first column of this table, is coming directly from the revenue loss category for ARPA funding. So that is a significant amount, and this is the dollar amount that we were able to utilize to be able to avoid the reduction in force that the county was facing had we not had the revenue that we received from the federal government. And then the next category that is called ARPA funding, that is mostly focused on the capital projects that were, are being recommended for funding. And as again, as I mentioned before, further details will be presented in the upcoming, in the upcoming slides. In addition to that, also cannabis revenue in the amount of two point seven, almost two point seven million dollars is being recommended for funding specific programs that the board of supervisor had previously funded using these revenue sources. And then the cannabis assignment that we had alluded to and discussed before, for the rate, funding of the radios in the sheriff's department. And then department funding from the health department of two hundred and twenty-six thousand. And then IT assignment that we have mentioned in the past, also, is also funding some of the capital projects as you saw on the previous slides. So all of that amounts to twenty-one point eight million dollars. Unfortunately, even though we did have significant one-time funding that we received from ARPA, we still have a significant number of funding augmentations to provide important services in the community. And, and this slide shows that the request for forty-two point five FTEs remains unfunded amounting and also the overall amount for these different requests from departments amounts to thirteen point nine million dollars. And you will hear from some of those departments that are not getting funding currently for these augmentations on the upcoming presentations. In addition to all the different augmentation requests that we received from departments over the last couple of weeks, we have been receiving different funding requests or we have been made aware of different funding requests that have been coming to the county. And as you can see on this slide, the purpose of this slide is just to show you some of the requests and funding that we have received as a county. And none of these that you see in, in front of you are included as part of the recommended budget. But as probably you will hear, as part of public comment or some other way, or probably you have received already, though some of these letters personally as, as board members, you will see actually the details of this important funding request that we have received. So that is overall what is included as part of the overall recommended budget. So at this point, I'm going to be moving more into the discussion on the American Rescue Plan or ARPA funding to, so that you, we have a better understanding as to what is being included and embedded as part of the recommended budget from this funding and the plan that is being presented to you today. And as Mr. Woods alluded initially, during his initial remarks, the main focus of the presentation of this ARPA plan funding is to place a specific dollar amounts into these eligible expenditure buckets per se that are highlighted in front of you. And the reason for that is just to be able to provide the board some type of framework so that the board could start discussing the overall priorities for the county, where the funding is being recommended for funding, and then to be able to provide direction to the, to staff so that we could go and make changes if necessary to the plan that is being presented to you today. And to also enable the county to move out of this pandemic on a strategic way where we use this one-time funding for one-time purposes where appropriate and also to start using it for funding some core services as appropriate and start a transition period where we are less dependent on those funds. So what was the process to develop this plan that is part of the recommended budget? So the process overall is that outreach was done with departments as early as December of last fiscal year, just asking for the overall needs that departments had in order to continue to respond into the pandemic for the end of this fiscal year. The result of that information was presented to the board supervisors during the February nine meeting. And then during that meeting, the board supervisors actually provided direction and approved specific programs to be delivered or implemented throughout the community. And that specific funding was significant funding for, that utilized some of the county's funding initially. Then after that, we learned that the ARPA plan was signed into law. The ARPA law was signed into law by March eleventh, two thousand and twenty-one. After that, that ARPA was signed into law, county staff had been working on reviewing the funding requirements. Initially, there was not a lot of information other than the specific bill itself. And then we, there was a presentation that was done for priorities to the budget committee as part of this ARPA funding on April twenty-eighth. The budget committee director was doing that meeting to go back and do a separate presentation at the end of May to further explore the overall plan for ARPA funding. So we did that also in, while that was happening and we were preparing for the presentation for the next month. On May ten, the draft ARPA requirements were released by the federal government. And then on the following day, May eleven, the county actually applied for those funds. And then on May seventeen, we also made a presentation as staff to the capital improvement committee, where the capital improvement committee provided some of their overall goals or their overall priorities for the utilization of ARPA funds. And I will summarize those on a, on a slide as well for you. And as indicated before, we presented that, this information also to the budget committee during May twenty-six. The budget committee provided some priorities as well to staff and I'll summarize those for you on the upcoming slide as well. And then at this point, where we are, is that we continue to work on reviewing those FAQs, frequently asked questions, any guidance that's coming from the treasury to ensure that what, whatever the county is proposing is going to meet the requirements of the federal government or the intent of ARPA. We're going to try to leverage these funds as to the extent possible. And also, the allocation is brought today to the board supervisors for consideration during the budget hearings to determine if what is being presented by the staff meets the overall goals of the board. So the preliminary funding allocation as recommended right now allocates forty percent under the revenue category loss, thirty-one percent under the pandemic response category, seventy percent for infrastructure, and eleven point two percent for economic recovery. This table in front of you shows, shows the same information that you have seen in the previous slide, but this shows it to you broken out by fiscal year and also shows it to you by the different categories as presented before. So we just wanted to bring your attention on this specific slide. To those items highlighted in yellow are those activities that, for example, for fiscal, fiscal year twenty-one, those are activities that the board of supervisors have re-approved. I'll just give you an example, twenty-one point nine eight million dollars of that. Approximately nineteen million dollars were approved as part of the overall response of the pandemic. And about sixty million dollars of that was approved during the board supervisors meeting in February nine. And prior to that, also, the board had approved funding for the VITA project. And prior to that, also the board had approved funding for the BETA project in December. That $21.98 million also makes the assumption that some of the costs for the BETA project, depending on when the costs were incurred, will also qualify for ARPA funding. Then the next category that you, where you look at revenue loss, you see that $14.6 million for fiscal year 21, 22. That includes the $10.9 million that I showed you in previous slides that is funding the core services augmentations that is enabling the county to retain all the field positions that were previously identified as being at risk. Also, I just want to point out to you on this specific slide, out of the $4.5 million for fiscal year 21, 22 I highlighted there in salmon is that as part of that $4.15 million, the board approved actually May 18, about $2 million for grants for certain businesses to be able to apply that were affected by the pandemic for the program that the health department presented to the board on that, on that day. And also just wanted to point out that the board also approved on May 25, $500,000 for funeral, the funeral assistance program that it would be part of the pandemic response cost category for fiscal year 21, 22. So this slide gives you a little more detail into the revenue loss category that you had seen in the previous slide. And as indicated before, one of the important aspects of this revenue loss category is that we were able to fund $10.9 million to continue to provide core services. In addition to that, I think something that is really important for the community also is that that revenue loss category was used to provide free access to county parks by the public. So that means that the day entry fees for the county parks will not be charged up to the public for next fiscal year. And if everything goes according to plan, and we may be able to use these ARPA funds under the revenue loss category as well for the upcoming two fiscal years if the board saw desires to direct us to continue with this policy. But I think that is a very important aspect to be able to get the community back into the street and be able to enjoy the outdoors and the beautiful parks that we have in our community. In addition to that, in this slide, I want to point your attention to the $3.4 million shown on the fiscal year 21, 22. There is still some potential use under this revenue loss category of approximately 3.4 that the county could use for the implementation or continuous support of core services going forward that has not already been allocated as part of the recommended budget. This slide provides you further details in the pandemic response category. The list of programs that the board of supervisors approved during the February 9 meeting is actually really large. So having here a table, I initially planned to have here a table for you, but it would have been too difficult to read. So instead of doing that, I'm just providing you with a bullet point of some of the important programs that the board supervisors funded. For example, in, in support of the public health response to the pandemic, the board approved approximately $16 million for the activities that you see listed there under that bullet point, which include housing assistance, food assistance, the small business grants, so on and so forth. And then more recently, as previously indicated, the board approved $500,000 for the funeral assistance program. As part of this category, we also are having to the $4.9 million of the BETA program that the board of supervisors approved. And in addition to that, we are also including as part of this plan in addition of $4.3 million for new COVID response programs in future years, even though the pandemic appears to be subsiding in our county and we're doing great. I think that the need ongoing community response is going to continue. So what I also want to add on this slide is that all of this plan on the pandemic response assumes that we will have eligible expenses that were incurred after March 3, 2021 that will be included in this area. We don't know the specific amounts of expenditures that will be incurred from March 3 forward for the categories or for the strategies that the board supervisors have re-approved. So we will have to do a reconciliation at the end of the fiscal year to ensure that we know what those expenditures are. And then to be able to determine if the amount that we are setting aside is appropriate for this specific category. But as of right now, we're being conservative and we're including the amount that we believe could be covered under this category. In addition to that area for the pandemic response, we also have the infrastructure projects that are being included as part of this ARPA plan funding allocation. And as you can see, a large portion of this is going to the parks, water and sewer projects previously identified for fiscal year 21, 22. We are including as part of the recommended budget, $12.4 million. And then we're also recommending that an additional couple of million dollars is also allocated over the next couple of fiscal years to continue to fund some of these projects. For example, for the Laguna Seca project during the current recommended budget, we're only including 500,000. But if the board approves this project overall, then what we will be doing is setting aside $1.9 million for this specific project to ensure that the county has the resources to finalize this project over the next three fiscal years. In addition to that, we also are including the jail lift sewer system project for $1.2 million as discussed before. And then for the next slide, we will be providing specific details that break down the different projects that fall within the different specific parks so that you could see the importance of each of those specific water sewer projects. And the board could determine whether or not you want to continue funding some of these projects as recommended. So for this, I would ask John Snively from the Public Works, Facilities and Parks to help me present these next few slides.
Thank you, Mr. Vega. Again, John Snively, management analyst with Public Works, Facilities and Parks. One of my responsibilities is to compile data and present the annual capital improvement program update to the CIC, BC, and eventually to the board supervisors for adoption. And as such, I've been working closely with subject matter export experts and project managers to identify projects that may fit into the capital improvement program for the upcoming fiscal year. And that's what drove this list of projects that was eventually submitted to the CAO's office. I think it's worth noting quickly that the previous slide showed the recommended budget options and there are some slight differences in these numbers as staff continues to identify specific projects. The only difference being Toro Park, there was one project that was removed. So if you're wondering why there's a $1.6 million shown in Toro Park in the previous slide in the recommended budget and $1.45 million shown here, we're continuing to revise that project list. Everything else should show up the same. The ARPA funding provides a unique opportunity to address longstanding water and sewer infrastructure needs in our county parks. These projects often are ineligible for grant funding because they are repairs and upgrades to existing systems. I think a good example of this would be the recent selection of grants from the Prop 68 parks programs, some of which we could apply to existing parks facilities, but the majority were geared towards new parks and new facilities. And so we have a difficult time identifying funding sources for existing parks. As was previously mentioned, the board may be considering free access to parks. And we can all imagine the increased usage, which would be a wonderful thing for our county residents, but would also put an additional strain on the existing infrastructure here. And so staff believes that the ARPA funding is an excellent opportunity to upgrade, repair and address existing issues with our water and sewer systems across the county park system. And as will be mentioned also in the, some of the CSA and CSD systems to bring them up to date and make them more functional for our county residents. The parks listed here are a selection of day use parks with some overnight facilities, specifically in Toro, the youth overnight facility. There were, projects were identified and broken up into three different categories. U for urgent repair and replacement or upgrades. These are items that staff believed warranted immediate attention and would be considered the highest priority. And although all projects are worthwhile projects to tackle with this funding, some could also be considered more of a maintenance repair item or a system improvement. For example, in the Toro Park list, the system improvement for a 200 amp power service to volunteers would enable us to accommodate three additional volunteer sites in the park, expanding the services in that, in that particular area. But it's up to the board to of course determine whether or not we want to limit the funding to the urgent projects or expand that to expand services in the county parks. Along or included on this call are Nathan Merkel, who is one of our parks, parks ops managers, who would be able to speak in more detail to any specific projects if the board has additional questions. But for now, this list provides a quick summary of some of the work that was designated to be done in our day use parks. Next slide, please. The remaining slides cover the lakes in which a majority of the work is, is focused. I believe Mr. Vega will note that the capital improvement committee and budget committee made some recommendations for the lakes, but for now, we're showing the entire list of projects. At the North Shore, we have again, these projects separated into water and sewer. The facilities here are quite dated and in serious need of an upgrade to continue to function properly and avoid costly repair and maintenance costs as well as the extended staff time needed to keep these systems operational in their current state. Next slide, please. The list of South Shore projects is listed here, again, water and sewer focused on strengthening the, here we go, strengthening and building resiliency in the water system delivery to the extensive water and sewer networks located there in South Shore. It's a very large facility with, with quite a spread out infrastructure system and some major improvements to the sewer system as well and some of the campgrounds as well as the main sewer treatment facility. Next slide, please. Finally, we have Lake Nacimento run as more of a resort facility. And again, significant deferred maintenance in the water and sewer systems here. These projects would focus on overhauling the system as it stands today as well as providing some upgrades to accommodate increased visitor capacity. Next slide, please. One item that is not included in the recommended budget but was submitted to the CAO and then to the CIC and the budget committee after the recommended budget was adopted was the list of projects for community service districts and community service areas. There's a number of items here. The first one I'd like to point out is the $1.2 million for the CSDs. This would be for surveys to conduct repairs and sewer line inspections at the Apaharo, Ronda and Chuar CSDs. We also have approximately $300,000 project for sewer line repair in Los Lomas. There's issue with slide outs in the sewer line causing some collapse of the system there. And this would reinforce the system and stabilize that location. There's also some generic projects for general replacement and inspections of sewer lines, manholes and repairs to our sewer pond. We also have Brian Flores and we also have Lynette Redman on the call to be able to speak to not only the parks, but some of the CSA and CSD projects. Next slide, please. That would be the last one that I would have. And so with that, I'll conclude my coverage of the project details and return the presentation over to Mr. Vega. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Snively, and thank you for that. As Mr. Snively mentioned, I had, I do have a slide that's upcoming where I'll show you some of the priorities that is presented to the CAC and the budget committee. So the next category in their ARPA funding also focuses on economic recovery. And as you can see on the table in front of you, we're also trying to follow the same strategy to spread this out over the next three fiscal years. And as mentioned previously, out of that $4.5 million is recommended as part of this plan. $2 million of that has already been approved for the grant, for grants for local restaurants, personal care services and public swimming pools. And $669,000 also that you see here at the bottom of this slide is included to help with funding for some of the revenue laws that the county experienced during fiscal year 2021. And the share of that revenue to the VSA's of the county, like the Monterey County Business Council and some of those other outside agencies, were proposing the utilization of 600,000 of that to be able to account for some of the reduction that those agencies received during the current fiscal year. As you recall, for fiscal year 2021, we continued with the same formula as a county to, for the sharing of revenue with these agencies. But the base that was used for the current fiscal year was approximately 12 and a half million dollars, which is significantly less than we normally receive. And we had continues with the existing formula for the fiscal year. This agency would have received significantly more revenue. So these $610,000 is to account for some of that impact that they've received. And the same, the same is true for fire districts and also for user agencies or our emergency 9911 system as well. So that amounts to the $2 million and the $669,000 I already allocated as part of the recommended budget. So as indicated before, some of the priorities that were received by staff from the capital improvement committee and the budget, the budget committee are shown for you here on the slide. Overall, the capital improvement committee indicated that they wanted to see add funding to CSAs and CSDs for some of the water and sewer projects, potentially up to $4.1 million. So this indicated that projects were also a priority for them. And even though the lakes were a priority for them as well, they wanted to evaluate the level of funding that was being provided for the different lakes. The budget committee similarly wanted to mention that the funding that was being proposed for the different lakes projects was also being evaluated. And they also provided us in addition to their priorities for the capital projects, or some of the priorities for ongoing funding, like the Salinas Valley Promise, childcare, the soccer accomplice, Esperanza Care. So and as you can see, there is also the CS, some of the top priorities for CSAs and CSDs. So in addition to the recommended augmentations, we just wanted to make sure that you understand, you and the public understands and we all understand that departments actually work really hard to make sure that the budget was presented as balanced. And as an example of this, for example, on the second bullet, some of the departments actually had to reduce staffing. So for the child support services department actually had requested initially $358,000 in funding, but working with the state and other funding sources, they were able to secure additional funding. So now the funding needs only $186,000. However, when the recommended budget was built, $358,000 was initially recommended. So that leaves additional funding to be able to use for all the purposes that the board may wish to use that funding for. And also in the same department, this department actually had identified nine vacant positions that they had had for a long period of time. And they, when they were looking at their overall funding availability, they realized that they didn't have enough funding to be able to sustain those vacancies over time. They actually recommend the elimination of those nine vacant positions as part of the baseline budget. Well, I think that is just as an example of the hard work the different departments actually have put into the development of the budget, where they are looking at ways to save, ways to reduce staffing where they know they're not going to have available funding and only request one for those things that are critical for their ongoing operations. So overall, the recommended budget, these are the recommendations that you see in your budget book. This is what we are recommending as part of these budget hearings. The number one is just the whole department hearing that is happening today, beginning at 9. Then continued those budget hearings in this tomorrow. And authorize the county administrative office to prepare the resolution reflecting any changes that we may hear today based on the reaction from the board. And then make any type of corrections due to clerical errors or also make a specific changes to position changes, counts appropriations or any clerical error that we may find as part of the review of the recommended budget. Part of the recommendations also from today's hearings is to authorize the use of or to the share of revenue with outside agencies indicated before. And the existing formulas that the board currently has actually agreed upon with these outside agencies. But the only difference is that instead of using the fiscal year 1818 audited financial numbers as the base, we are recommending that fiscal year 1818 is the one that is used as the base there for this year. Given that we know that this agency has actually received reduced funding for the current fiscal year for 2021. So by using 1818 as a base, that will give them additional funding. And that's the $600,000 that you have seen on the previous slide. Similar to that, we're also recommending a similar type of allocation for 172 revenue sharing with user agencies where we're using the fiscal year 1818 figures as a base instead of using 19, 20 figures as a base to recognize some of that revenue loss that happened due to the pandemic. And then also for item number six, we're recommending that the MOE for the road fund is also as part of the DOT transfer.
What are you doing? What's your problem? What's your problem?
Another recommendation that is also part of this is to authorize also the similar type of formula for user agencies for the 172 program for proposition one to revenue sharing with fire agencies as well. And we're also asking as part of these recommendations, as you indicated before, right, you had actually acted upon the Linda Ball report earlier today to establish a 115 trust fund, so we're incorporating this as part of also the recommended budget to establish the parts and take all the necessary actions to ensure that this program is established going forward. In addition to those recommendations, we are also requesting that any budget in a self-funded balance is allocated to support a strategic reserve. This is just in alignment with the existing policy that the board supervisors has to set aside up to 10% of estimated revenues to continue to fund the strategic reserve, also to be able to fund contingencies as appropriate in accordance with the current existing financial policies, and also to set aside any funding base left over after those two obligations have been set, to continue to fund the unfunded liabilities for the county as a result of pensions as part of the establishment of the 115 trust. The next recommendation as part of the budget is also to authorize the County Administrative Office to make transfers to and from all these different self-funded assignments, as you can see here on the screen. And also, we are asking for authorization from the board to make adjustments to the specific, or make transfers to specific available fund balance at the end of the fiscal year. And also, as part of the recommended budget, we always incorporate a capital improvement plan, and then to make sure that the capital improvement plan is also reviewed and adopted as part of the recommended budget. So the next steps at this point is that the board supervisors will hear from the public as part of public comment. We also, you'll also receive presentations from some departments that still have some of many needs today. The board, during these specific presentations, they could provide direction to make additions, reductions, or modifications to the budget. And in order to make these additions or changes to the budget, it is important to note that we have available some kind of this revenue growth, so estimated $1.3 to $1.4 million in revenue. Also, as indicated during the ARPA presentation, the board supervisors could direct us to use the ARPA funds in different ways that they believe is appropriate to the goals of the county, and also continues, appropriation is also available, estimated $6.7 million for continuing funding, of course, services to the community. So with that, I conclude my presentation, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you so much, Ezekiel and Duane, for the presentation. At this point, we could go to board questions on this, otherwise I was thinking we would go to public comment and then address board questions and comments in the department by which each issue fell. Okay, so let's take it out to public comment. I have asked our clerk of the board, Valerie Ralph, to lead us through public comment today, so I will pass the microphone over to her. If you are with us on Zoom right now and you would like to make public comment, please raise your hand so that we can work our way through everyone on public comment. If you're following us on, not on Zoom, on YouTube or Facebook, and you would like to join us on Zoom, you may log on to webinar ID number 224397747. And as with public comment, we are not able to respond to your comments and questions today, but we do appreciate hearing your valuable input into our process. As I said earlier, this is your budget, and we appreciate hearing your thoughts and opinions. In order to get through as much public comment as possible, we will, again, work through a minute thirty for public comment, but we do ask that you raise your hand so that we can monitor how long to proceed with public comment and plan our meeting around the rest of the day. With that, Valerie, thank you so much for leading us through public comment today, and I'll pass the microphone over to you. Thank you.
Good morning. So we will call for public comment. I do not see anybody in chambers, however, we have a handful of hands on Zoom, so we will start with Sid Williams, and I have allowed you to unmute yourself.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. We can hear you.
Okay, thank you. I'm speaking to you today as the Chair of your Military and Veterans Affairs Advisory Commission, and I have three items I would like for you to consider. First, I think it is imperative for the county to continue to support the Military and Veterans Affairs Office. This essential function provides critical financial support to the veterans in the county, bringing billions of, millions of dollars into the county. Most of these funds are spent here and generate significant tax revenues. You might say this office provides substantial portion of their own budget, veterans, yeah, not just take. Due to the pandemic, the 2020 homeless veteran stand down was canceled. However, the need is still there. We are conducting a short version this month and will begin planning for the next full stand down immediately thereafter. Without your continued support, this important event would not be possible. For a long time, the Military and Veterans Affairs Office has been located in the courthouse in Monterey. As the responsibilities have grown, the space has not. There is now a chance to move the office to a more accessible location where easier services would be coupled with an environment encompassing a broader community of services provided by the county. I hope you will continue to support the move of the Veteran Service Office to this new place. Veterans will be better served. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams, and I apologize, I cannot see the person behind the podium in chambers, so if they could come up for public comment. Two, please.
Free spay and neuter to aggressively address the community cat population of the county for over three decades. In preparation for this event, I started working at a few Monterey County SNP bus feral events. I watch these trappers set traps and catch cats, lots of cats, enough to fill clinics. Easy, I thought, we can do this. It wasn't that easy. Despite advertising throughout the Santa Cruz County, we found only a couple small unaddressed colonies in Watsonville. The rest were north Monterey County. Now, I don't love that border because honestly, the cats don't care about it. And thankfully, I convinced Project Pur to include the Monterey County communities of Paharo and Royal Oaks because there are plenty of cats to trap there. I've learned a couple of things. The first is T and R is working. Struggling to find these explosive colonies has been proved to me. The second is we must also address how these cats end up on the streets. To begin with, these are the cracks I saw. Anyone who owns a cat and lets it out may as well have a community cat because they soon have access to every cat around. And the kittens start up to three to four litters a year. Some make it to safety and crowd our shelters and overwhelm our rescues. Some don't make it at all, and yet others start that feral lifestyle, a potentially never-ending cycle of litters and suffering. Access to affordable and convenient spay and neuter for all pets is imperative. We must do better for these animals. We must advocate and educate. I thank you for your forward thinking and the funding you have already provided. I respectfully ask for it to continue. Thank you.
Thank you. Next public comment in person.
Hi, good morning. My name is Veronica, and I live also in Monterey County. I have been involved in cat rescue for about 11 years now, and what I know is that we cannot rescue ourselves out of this crisis, and it is a crisis. I have personally trapped and covered the cost of about 52 cats in the Casterville-Prundell area. I had called the F B C A, and they said, no, they cannot help at all, but what they can do is rent me a trap, one trap for $5 a day. I had trapped 25 cats in my mom's. Can you imagine at one trap at a time, $5 a day, plus covering the cost of spay and neuter, plus the vaccination? This is not sustainable. So I decided to purchase three traps myself. I have had people call me because they know that I'm an animal person, and they tell me they cannot leave their house before work and travel all the way to Highway 68 to do spay and neuter. So I go to Solidad, sometimes Greenfield, trap cats, come back, I spend hours trying to trap a cat, come back and go first in line at the F B C A for one spot out of four. Unbelievable. When domestic pets are not fixed, they transfer to community cats and dogs. We need to do better. There's a huge need, and SNP bus is actually the solution to this. So we need to, sorry, so I have seen so many disgusting things out there where cats are riddled with BBs and poison. I had a niece cry to me saying that her dog and her cat got poisoned, and they regurgitated blood, and they died. We need to do better. SNP bus is the solution.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, just in the course of our discussions, I was confused to whether the recommended budget included the spay and neuter provision with SNP bus that I thought it was, and then I saw it for an augmentation. So I'm confused about that. There's some we can address at a later time, but thank you.
Okay, so we'll go back to public comment for Zoom. I will be unmuting Rafael Hernandez, and you'll have a minute thirty seconds.
Good morning, Chair Askew and Board. Thank you for your, this opportunity to contribute to this very important process. My name is Rafael Hernandez, speaking from Monterey Bay Economic Partnership's Housing Program. I'm here to speak in support of adding a housing planning position to county staff. In addition to planning positions in consideration, including a housing planning position that could focus on affordable housing, would enable the county to achieve its current and future regional housing needs and allocation goals. It would bring critical support to county staff's work confronting the housing crisis and the homeless challenges of our county. Adding additional staff that could focus on housing is also in alignment with the Farmworker Housing Study and Action Plan of the Salinas Valley and Paharo Valley that the county helps sponsor and that I lead with City of Salinas and working with county staff and the different jurisdictions in the valley. Specifically, Action Plan Item R6, Ombudsman Assistance, which says to fund and designate a point person or responsible for shepherding farmworker housing project applications through the local government approval process and advocating for them. Along with the county planning, it is necessary and appropriate to also provide staff for housing to make sure both staff teams are appropriately resourced to move the pipeline forward on both sides of the equation. In conclusion, housing is so central to people's lives, so it would be a great assistance for our community members. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you. The next person for public comment is Wayland, and I'll be unmuting your mic right now. Wayland? There you go. We'll have a minute thirty for you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you said that you were unmuting me. Thank you. Hi, my name is Wayland Chang. I am a Monterey County resident, a military veteran, and an animal lover. I've been volunteering as a kitten and puppy foster for the last eight years, and my interest in the spay and neuter program has to do with the fact that I have seen so many residents, especially in our lower-income communities, who are interested in doing the responsible thing but often don't have the finances to do it. We know that a lot of people love animals, and they will continue to adopt animals, but they don't always have the means to spay and neuter them, which is a great way to control the population. The spay and neuter procedures not only help control the feral population, but they also improve the quality of life for existing animals and preserves the health of domestic animals. By stabilizing our feral communities, we are able to have healthier communities, more resistance to illness and disease. And why should that be important to the rest of us? Because domestic pets who roam outdoors cross paths with these same ferals, and stronger and healthier ferals will pass fewer illnesses to our beloved pets. Although people will always want pets, we cannot rescue our way out of this feral problem, and these spay and neuter programs sponsored by entities like the SNP bus will improve the health of both domestic and feral animals while curbing population growth and saving the county money that they have to expend for both animal control and shelter operations. Please, please do allocate sufficient funding for domestic and feral spay and neuter programs in Monterey County. Thank you.
Madam Chair, thank you. Could I ask a question, please? Is it possible, perhaps through Ezekiel Vega, for us to know when people are speaking whether or not the item is included in the budget now, and they're simply speaking in support, or if it's an addition to the budget program and the housing planner that was brought forward from Monterey Bay Economic Partnership?
Yeah, I think that's a great question. Ezekiel Vega, are you able to comment on either one of those?
Regarding the, yes, supervisor Askew. So regarding the request for the mobile clinics for spay and neuter, that is included as part of the budget, we're including $99,000 that were requested as an augmentation. So that is, it is included as part of the recommended budget. The other part on the planner, I have to look further into it, so I'm getting more details before I comment on it. But all the recommendations or all the requested augmentations from the Housing and Economic Development Department related to positions has been approved, and this is not in relation to the department, is specific to M B E P. Is that what this is about, the question? Yes?
No, I think the one question was in regards to, does the Health Department include funding for spay and neuter programming? And you said that there was $99,000 included, if I heard you correctly. And the second question was regarding planner, long-term housing planner positions in housing and community development. My understanding was that they were included in the budget, but if we could just get verification on that.
Yes, all the planner positions that were requested by the department are included in the budget. There are no positions that were requested that are not recommended.
Okay, does that clarify?
Yep, that's exactly what I need to hear. I think it could be helpful as we go through the public comments to know whether or not we are looking at additional augmentations, or if it's support for something that's in the budget that they want to ensure we don't take out.
Perfect, wonderful. So I would say, yeah, if there's a supervisor who wants to get clarification as we proceed, just jump in, and we will get that clarification as we proceed. Wonderful, thank you.
So we'll move on to Andrea Brinson. I'll allow you to talk. You have to unmute yourself on the other side for a minute thirty seconds.
Hello, my name is Andrea Brinson. I'm actually the President of the Solidad Mission Chamber of Commerce, and I am a member of the SNP imperative spay and neuter project. I'm so relieved to hear that in the line item that there's $99,000 going to SNP. Last year, I spoke to each of the esteemed supervisors in a meeting, and I had given my personal stats of what I have done in South Monterey County. And, you know, I think one of the things that has been so fantastic is that there's not, there's a plethora of us crazy cat ladies that are out there that are really trying to make a difference for all of our individual communities. I would like to really say thank you to all of the supervisors for ensuring that SNP became part of the line item budget. $99,000 is going to significantly help our underserved communities. And I just really wanted to say thank you so much for ensuring that we can continue this imperative work. We can't rescue our way out of this. We have to spay and neuter. So again, I'd just like to say thank you so very much to all of the supervisors and all of the Monterey County committees on behalf of SNP. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We will move on to Sid Depois, and I will allow you to talk. You have to unmute yourself on the other side for a minute thirty.
Thank you very much. This is Candy Depau. I live in Solidad in the county area. So good morning, Madam Chair and supervisors. Besides the obvious need to support law enforcement in this enormous county, I'm speaking on behalf of county residents who do not live near law enforcement. I understand that many of you do live near law enforcement services, but rural residents but rural residents do not. And when the sheriff's budget is not fully funded for the employees that it requests, it minimizes the effectiveness of that office for our area. And I would hope that the Board of Supervisors would be willing to fund all of the required positions that the sheriff's office is requesting. I sincerely thank you for your time and consideration in this matter.
Thank you. We will move on to Donna E. Myers. I will allow you to talk. If you unmute yourself on the other side for a minute thirty.
Good morning, Chair and Board of members. My name is Donna Myers and I'm the General Manager of the Salinas Valley Basin Groundwater Sustainability Agency. I'm here today to support your proposed budget as presented by staff and to express my support for the continued partnership between Monterey County and the Groundwater Sustainability Agency. I would like your board to be aware of one priority project for the benefit of the entire Salinas Basin, which will be the Deep Aquifer Study, which the GSA hopes to partner with Monterey County Water Resources Agency on beginning in early 2022. This study is a priority for the GSA and agriculture and domestic water users in the one-eighty-four-hundred sub-basin. I look forward to briefing your board later in the fall regarding the release of five groundwater sustainability plans for the Salinas Valley Basin. The county's membership in the JPA that formed the GSA is appreciated and we look forward to providing additional information to your board on our efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Caesar Lara, I will allow you to talk. If you unmute yourself for a minute thirty seconds.
Good morning, members of the Board of Supervisors. As we continue to navigate the pandemic and the reopening, we need to have the necessary infrastructure in place to provide families with the social emotional supports. Who knows what the long-term impact of a year-long isolation has caused on already underserved community and families at large? I really want to thank Luis Alejo, Chris Lopez and Wendy Rudaske for their open transparency during this last budget cycle with hosting meetings. Luis Alejo is right and addressing the divide has been the theme of the year. We have many challenges in the new normal and this year's budget needs to address those. Beyond the support of the broadband infrastructure, we want to support the two-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand for the opening of the county parks. We need District Four and District One supports around county parks with funding like what's being proposed with BMX and skate parks along with the needs to address childcare for working families with pathways to recovery funding. Healthcare, like expanded care for another one million dollars and two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for the Salinas Valley Promise. Monterey County needs to transition out of punitive approaches pointed at our most vulnerable population struggling with substance abuse, alcoholism, mental health illness. We need to spend less money on work. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Melanie Scherer, I will allow you to talk. You have to unmute yourself on the other side for a minute thirty.
Good morning. My name is Melanie Scherer and I'm the proud founder of SNIP, the Spay and Neuter Imperative Project. SNIP is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. My board receives zero compensation and we provide low-cost free mobile spay and neuter to your communities in need. And we have fixed over eight thousand animals in less than three years for Monterey County. Many of these pets have come from unincorporated areas of Monterey County. SNIP has remained committed and has worked all through COVID and we never, ever stopped in Monterey County. I am requesting funding for one domestic pet clinic and one feral cat clinic once a month in the unincorporated areas of Monterey County for the twenty-one-twenty-two fiscal year. Clinics are thirty-seven-hundred each, seventy-four-hundred per month. That's eighty-eight thousand eight hundred per year and the price includes fixing the pet, two vaccines, a rabies and a parvo. That basically breaks down to approximately one-twenty-five a pet per clinic. I would also quickly like to end with graciously thanking the Monterey County Supervisors for entrusting and granting SNIP with forty-three thousand two hundred dollars of taxpayer money that was spent directly in unincorporated areas to fix feral cats in Monterey County. Our mission is accomplished and we performed twelve out of twelve clinics with four-hundred-and-seventy-four ferals fixed. I'd like to urge all of you, please be part of the solution and join our spay and neuter revolution. Thank you guys very much for your time.
Thank you. Moving on to Freni Cooper, I'll allow you to talk. You have to unmute yourself on the other side for a minute thirty.
Good morning. My name's Freni Cooper and I am part of Monterey Bay Economic Partnership. I want to speak strongly in support of the amount allocated in the budget toward broadband spending. You'll get a presentation from Eric Chatham during this session and we work closely with the IT Department, very closely with ISP's residents and the Central Coast Broadband Consortium to identify those areas of greatest need and identify projects that will have maximum impact and affect the most citizens in the county. So I just want to express my support for the four-point-two-million dollars in broadband spending and I'm very happy to collaborate with all the entities. We have no vested interest in this besides trying to get broadband for all at a reasonable cost throughout the Monterey Bay region. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Moving on to Joseph Derusi, I'll allow you to talk. You have to unmute yourself on the other side for a minute thirty seconds.
Members of the Board, my name is Joe Derusi. I'm with Monterey County Office of Education's Adult Education Program. I am speaking on behalf of the County Jail Project and the Sheriff's Department. I wanted to state that during the pandemic, the staff, including deputies and Charles De Silva, provided service, educational service to students for adult education, including career and college transition, high school diploma, high school equivalency and English language development. Now, the critical mission of the staff at the jail to ensure that students have access to educational programming was realized throughout the pandemic. Has many of the staff there made it their mission to ensure that inmates were allowed access to key educational programming. The County Office of Education has delivered support through direct digital distance learning for the last three years and we continue to enjoy a terrific partnership with Monterey County Jail team and their staff. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We'll move on to Paul Tran. I'll allow you to talk. You have to unmute yourself on the other side for a minute thirty seconds.
Good morning, Chair Asquith, Honorable Members of the Board. My name is Paul Tran. I'm a Monterey County voter, resident's freckles. In order to protect the health, safety and welfare of your residents, I urge you to increase the sheriff's office budget as requested by the sheriffs, especially the seventeen unfunded deputy positions carried out from last year. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you so much. Moving on to phone number ending in three, four, five. I'll allow you to talk. You have to press star to unmute, star six to unmute yourself. Phone number ending in three, four, five?
I'm actually calling from my computer, but it looks like I'm the person.
Hello? This is?
There you go. Phone number three, four, five?
Yes, that's me. Hi, my name is Kathy Morgan and I'm from District Five. I'm calling to ask that the sheriff's office is fully staffed and funded. If my family members are home or in jeopardy, I want the sheriff to arrive quickly with enough deputies to deal with the issue. I want to feel safe and secure in my own home. This past year, we've seen how much the sheriff has done for our communities. This ranges from arresting criminals and getting them off the streets for both the sheriff's areas and other cities within the county to mass evacuations during the fires. What would we do if they didn't have enough people to make evacuations during times of emergencies? One of the members of the Board of Supervisors has been quite negative about the sheriff, but his district doesn't depend on them for public safety concerns. My district does and we truly appreciate the sheriff. In my opinion, the sheriffs aren't asking for enough. Public safety should be concern one, number one for the people. Please give them all they're asking for to keep our neighborhoods and families safe. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Now moving on to Kevin Dayton. I'll allow you to, ask you to unmute yourself for a minute thirty.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Supervisors. Kevin Dayton calling here. First, I thought Mr. Vega and staff did a very clear, understandable presentation for the budget to the public, so good for that. And thank you Supervisor Alejo for sending out the tweet reminding people about this budget meeting. I'm calling with some business priorities. I think that various business groups in the county will be pleased about the plans for the housing planner and planning for economic development. It's great to see the broad support for better broadband access and, you know, that's being worked on quite a bit in the city of Salinas as well and Supervisor Alejo's district with proposals for East Alisal Street and connections to the Alisal district there. It was mentioned by Mr. Vega that you might be contacted by interested parties about the additional funding requests. And one of those I expect will be the temporary homeless shelter demolition on West Alisal across the street from your facility as well. And there may be some other issues that come up as well. I'm going to have leaders of the various business groups look over the various appropriations and determine if anything should be increased or, but it should be praised. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Moving on to Yvette Padilla. I'll allow you to unmute yourself and then you have a minute thirty seconds.
Hello, good morning. This is Yvette Padilla. I am the Senior Executive for North Monterey County Unified School District and I will be speaking on the behalf of our Superintendent. But first of all, I would like to confirm that our supervisors did receive this letter. So it is with great urgency that I write this letter of support in approving the renewed MOU of understanding between North Monterey County Unified School District and the Monterey County Sheriff's Office for a dedicated school resource officer for the North Monterey County community. While the district will fund the school resource office program cost at one-hundred percent for the 2021-2022 school year, it has come to my recent attention the potential budget reductions to the sheriff's office will resolve in ending special assignment positions, which will then cause a redistribution of senior sheriff deputies to be pulled from other assignments such as the school resource office and be redeployed for basic service coverage on beats. So I know I'm running out of time. So in addition, we did send a bunch of examples on how they support our community. But in addition, our school resource officer connects with students and parents with informational presentations about vaping, safety and other topics of concern. There is also a career pathway for criminal justice and first responders in our high school that coordinates with the school resource officer and the Sheriff's Explorer Program to provide our students with the opportunity to understand the many careers within the public service section. So we are urging that you renew our MOU to continue the school resource officer and indicate your support to the sheriff. Again, we do provide one-hundred percent funding for this position and the district placement. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Moving on to Robert Daniels. I'll allow you to talk. Unmute yourself on the other side for a minute thirty.
Good morning. At this time, I would ask the Board to hold any further augmentations to the sheriff's budget as we take a deeper look into the many discrepancies surrounding this department's spending patterns. Not only is the sheriff guilty of mismanaging county funds, but is unwilling to take personal accountability for his mistakes, which only raises concerns to where it's the integrity of the public officials within. I would also like to highlight or echo my fellow residents that infrastructure of the county needs to be highlighted and to further highlight something that the gentleman during the presentation said that financial direction needs to be put into infrastructure and that expenditures need to be cut in the future and it needs to be watched that. How you have my time?
Okay, thank you. Moving on to Mark Hartunian. Allowing you to unmute yourself for a minute thirty.
Good morning and thank you. Good morning, Chair Asquith and to the Board of Supervisors. Thank you for giving me this opportunity. My name is Mark Hartunian. I speak in my capacity as a Commissioner for the Military and Veterans Affairs Commission. I want to applaud the Board of Supervisors for all the support and guidance you've offered this commission. No question that Supervisor Lopez, Supervisor Asquith, Supervisor Phillips, Supervisor Alejo, all of you have been meaningful stalvers for that commission and our veterans within our community of Monterey County. Thank you for that. We thank you for your responsible funding and your dedication to our military veterans. And I ask that you give due consideration to the projects of the Military and Veterans Affairs Director, Jason Cameron. I know that he has budget proposals before you and project initiatives and I thank you for your consideration and your evaluation as to what the office submits for proposals to provide for our veterans in our county. And once again, thank you for all of your support.
Thank you. Moving on to Lori with SNIPUS. Allow you to talk for a minute thirty to unmute yourself on the other side.
Hi, good morning. Thank you, Chair Asquith and Board of Supervisors. Last year I spoke to you all in chambers about the need for low-cost spay and neuter services and you all heard our call and provided funding for the feral cats in our community. We've all been challenged by COVID and still SNIP remained on the ground helping communities that need it most. SNIP is effective, accessible and affordable. I recently listened to Supervisor Lopez's budget talk for his district and I heard that one of the citizens say they needed resources in the community and transportation to get there and it reminded me of why SNIP is important to the unincorporated cities here in our county. Last year we went to San Lucas with supplies and everyone was so excited to see us there. I can tell you about the volume of kittens due to spring season. I can tell you about the dogs being dumped and I could tell you so many sad stories posted daily on Facebook. But what I want to do is share some accomplishments of SNIP and how collectively together with all of you we can continue to make a difference for the families and the pets in Monterey County. We fixed over twenty-five thousand animals since SNIP has been out on the streets. Eighty-five hundred of those just here in Monterey County. And just last year, due to the funding that you provided us, four-hundred-and-seventy-four feral cats that we know will not have kittens in our community. So I want to thank you for supporting our efforts to end animal overpopulation in Monterey County. Have a great day.
Thank you so much. Moving on to Erica Lee. I'll allow you to talk to unmute yourself on the other side for a minute thirty.
Good morning, Supervisors and members of the public. My name is Erica Lee and I am the Principal at Castroville Elementary School. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak this morning. I am addressing you to express my concern about proposed budget reductions to the Monterey County Sheriff's Department that will adversely affect community-based programs, specifically the school resource officer position. Speaking as a school administrator in Castroville where we do not have a city police department, I can tell you that our SRO, Deputy Coronado, is an invaluable resource to our school community. He not only comes to our campus to provide support if we have an issue, he also consults with us regularly via phone on other non-emergency matters. His input and participation on our school safety team is critical to the ongoing safety of our students and staff. And in fact, he is a key member of the safety teams at all of our school sites and works to help create our annual school safety plans. Another way he supports student safety is by making annual anti-tobacco and other presentations to our students and parents. Through these ongoing interactions, he builds relationships with our students and their families. Given society's current climate, I'm sure the Board can appreciate the importance of fostering these positive relationships between law enforcement and the school community. I have no doubt about the value of having an SRO for our district and I ask that the Board please reconsider reductions in funding to the sheriff's department. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Moving on to a phone number ending in eight oh nine. Please press star six to unmute yourself for a minute thirty.
Hello?
Hi, please start your comment. We can hear you. Please start your comment.
Okay. Okay, yes. Thank you.
Okay, yes. Thank you, Madam Chair and Board of Supervisors for allowing me to speak. My name is Ricky Cabura. I'm a resident here in Monterey County, live in Salinas. I've always agreed with the Sheriff's Department. Um, I've had complaints, lawsuits against them, but today they are the Sheriff's Department's of, of, of a dream. I could never imagine what we have today. They are, they're far better trained. Um, they are very sensitive to our diverse community. Um, uh, they, they have a lot of diversity. Um, the, the, from, from all my employees, the, I hear nothing but good things, nothing but good things from the Sheriff's Department. And we can't reward them by slashing seventeen positions and, and, and slashing the budget. No, no, no. Here in Monterey County, we have a dream come true Sheriff's Department that many other counties can only dream of. So, please, I implore you, let's reward them, not penalizing for, for having made all the changes they needed to make, for rising to the occasion, for all that special training. No, no, no. We, we cannot penalize them. We, we need to reward them or at the very least, let's not slash the budget. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Moving on to phone number ending in six nine seven, please press star six to unmute yourself.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Board of Supervisors. My name is Ann and I live in District Four. I am speaking out today to support the Sheriff's Office and their budget. Unlike city police departments who have officers able to respond in a few short minutes, it takes deputies much longer. This is because they have more space to cover. It is for this reason that you should fund the deputy sheriff's positions that you were funded in previous fiscal years. We need more deputies on the street, not less. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Moving on to Eloise Schrim, you have a minute thirty. I'll allow you to talk. Unmute yourself on the other side, please.
Um, hello, this is Eloise Schim calling. And, um, I'm calling about the Seaside Dental Clinic, otherwise known as the Clinic de Salad, uh, Valley de Salinas. Um, in October last year, I had a bad experience. I was, uh, kind of railroaded actually to go to their Castroville Clinic. And if I didn't do so, they were going to remove me. I had a, uh, a, an appointment for over six months. And as a new patient, their manager Omar Chombo was warning me that if my teeth did not meet their approval, I would be sent to Castroville or I could leave. I had waited in their lobby for an hour and given them all my information, including my credit card. And I was sent on my way basically and literally kicked to the curb. Um, healthcare takes a hefty annual budget. And I think that their customer service entity needs decisive improvement. I've been a resident here in Seaside for six years before that in Marina, seven years. And I would not tell, I would not go there and I would tell my friends not to go there. It was such a bad experience.
Thank you. Moving on to Sonia Kohler, allowing you to talk. Unmute yourself on the other side for a minute thirty.
Thank you. Good morning. I'm Sonia Kohler, speaking on behalf of all those within the Bright Beginnings Early Childhood Initiative. I'm here to respectfully share a collective set of recommendations for one-time investments in childcare affordability and infrastructure, which I shared at the Budget Committee via email with you all last week. Dozens of agencies and individuals helped craft these recommendations and have signed on to a letter of support, like MCOE, United Way, First Five, like parents from across the county. Ag and hospitality have expressed their support in their own letter. We'd be here a long time if they all gave public comment, so just a few share their perspectives here today. Our focus is threefold: on the affordability of childcare through stipends for families that are marginalized; on teacher retention and attraction stipends for the low-wage workforce that is dropping out of the field due to COVID hardships; and on business startup support and facilities planning for our childcare infrastructure that falls short of our needs and has been hit hard by COVID. This fits into the bigger picture of what we know the families of Monterey County need to recover from the pandemic, like linguistically and culturally responsive health and wellbeing supports, like access to higher education, like business stimulus especially that leads to more living wage jobs, like open spaces to connect and recreate with family friends and nature. We, as a childcare system, the various agencies are ready to implement and leverage through existing programs and grading funds. We are in this together to be the thriving, engaged, and just Monterey County we strive to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Bernie Gomez, I'll allow you to talk. You have to unmute yourself on the other side for a minute thirty.
Hello, uh, good morning, Madam Chair and the Board. Uh, regarding the Sheriff's Budget, um, you know, a year ago or when the, the Supervisor Lopez was Chair, he mentioned to us, you know, uh, and to me specifically because I was there, said that coming at the last minute to provide public, uh, public comment was not enough to, uh, to, you know, do the, uh, do our part in voicing our concerns. So, we've been in part of the process since the beginning, try to do our best to understand and, and have conversations with y'all. So, especially now regarding the, uh, this, uh, developments, right, uh, just reporting the, uh, the, uh, mismanagement of funds by the sheriff, I think it's a, it's a derelict of duty if we continue to, you know, uh, fund or, well, not continue to fund because, you know, obviously there's a, a, a maintenance of effort to fund every mandated department. But it is a, uh, I think it's, it's prudent to say that we can eliminate permanently seventeen positions and not, uh, you know, afford the, the sheriff to get away with, uh, his, his crimes. You know, his theft, his forgery, his, his fraud, right? Uh, you know, this whole thing around, uh, public safety, you know, a sheriff does not create public safety. They, you know, uh, they, you know, we need the services that's gonna, uh, uh, support the root causes that are actually gonna create public safety, you know? Uh, we need to fund, uh, actual, you know, and leverage money and, and, uh, services that are actually gonna help our people, you know, uh, uplift, come, uh, get uplifted from the poverty, right, and actually create, you know, that safety environment, that, that healing environment.
Moving on to Monta Potter, I'll allow you to talk. You have to unmute yourself on the other side for a minute thirty.
Good morning Chair Askew and Supervisors. I'm Monta Potter, the Project Coordinator for Parket, which is respectfully requesting support from the Board of Supervisors of fifty thousand to implement a visitor and traffic management project along the Highway One Corridor. The Parket Steering Committee includes residents, nonprofit organizations, including Big Sur Land Trust, Point Lobos Foundation, Big Sur Marathon Foundation, and public agencies, including state parks and the Monterey Peninsula Regional Park District. We're hoping that the county will join in this public-private partnership by contributing fifty thousand to support these efforts. The public has highlighted the challenges of the increase in visitors to the coastal areas through years of public meetings. Thrown out of these discussions, the Parket Initiative addresses many of the public concerns: safe passage for vehicles and pedestrians through this heavily traveled corridor, restrooms for visitors, and reduction of vehicles traveling along Highway One. Parket welcomes the county's financial participation in our efforts to address these visitor impacts. This is also a way for the county to address the findings of the Big Sur Destination Stewardship Plan. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Moving on to A.J. Costa, I'll allow you to talk. You have to unmute yourself on the other side for a minute thirty seconds.
Hello, uh, good morning Chair and Supervisors. Uh, my name is Alexis Janet Gossas and I'm a Hartnell College graduate and currently a CSU Monterey Bay student. So, I'm here on behalf of all students. And along with being a longtime Monterey County resident, I can't stress the importance of reinvesting into our future, which are in educational programs, affordable housing, and mental health services. Specifically using funds from the budget to go to medical teams that can be of use and on call for mental health emergencies. Policing and violence should be the last resort, and I echo a lot of the comments of wanting my family and friends to feel safe when being helped and not feel threatened or fear that their instability or compromised mental health will get them harmed or jailed. Thank you, and I sincerely hope that you take these comments and concerns for the future of our community's priorities seriously.
Thank you. Moving on to John Lott, I'll allow you to unmute yourself for a minute thirty.
Good morning and thank you for your service in these very difficult times and very difficult position you're in. I have sent you several letters already about public safety and law enforcement, so I won't go too deeply into the subject matter. Just that I am definitely in support of the Sheriff's Office. Sheriff and law enforcement is critical infrastructure, and when you start getting behind on it, it's very difficult to catch up at that point in time when you're really going to need them and have to have them there at that moment of crisis. So, I encourage you to consider getting those positions that we are losing and continue to lose back into the funded portion of the ledger. And we need them very badly. I work very closely with them, uh, as a critical volunteer. So, I get to see the things they get to see on the street, and this is not a very pretty picture out there. Please, please, for, uh, sheriff and public safety and law enforcement. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Denise Noel, I'll allow you to talk. Unmute yourself on the other side for a minute thirty.
Hi, good morning and thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Denise Noel. I, I work for Salinas City Elementary School District as a preschool program coordinator, and I also live in Salinas. As you may know, or you may have experienced, most families are not able to work unless they have high-quality childcare for their children. High-quality childcare and education is very expensive. And even if a family can afford it, there's not enough in our county. Staffing for childcare and education is a huge part of this equation. In Monterey County, the average early childhood educator earns approximately fifteen to eighteen dollars per hour. These low wages are a deterrent for new employees into the early childhood education field. In addition, high credentialing requirements also create financial hardships for those interested in this noble work. It's been even harder during the pandemic to keep early childhood educators on staff, since the risks are high and the work even harder to keep children and educators safe and healthy to help stop the spread of this virus. I am respectfully asking the Board of Supervisors to invest in incentives to attract and retain early childhood education teachers and caregivers so we can open more classrooms and serve more children and families here in Salinas, Monterey County, and across the country. Thank you for listening to my concerns. This will give the early childhood community the value that they, your value, as they work tirelessly with young children. This is good for teachers, families, and children, and the general workforce and overall economy. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Maria Carmen Para, I'll allow you to talk. You have to unmute your side on the other side for a minute thirty. Maria Carmen Para?
Yes, I am here. Thank you. Thank you Board of Supervisors. Uh, my name is Maria Carmen Para. I will speak in Spanish. Mi comentario público será en español, de parte de la mamá Graciela Alfaro. O sea, soy madre soltera de tres hijos, vivo aquí en Salinas, y estoy aquí dando mi experiencia de las barreras que he tenido para encontrar cuidado de niños. Yo trabajo en el campo y me he visto en la necesidad de parar de trabajar porque no tengo quien me cuide de mis niños. He ido a varios programas- Para poder traducir? Sí. Mi nombre, usted está hablando para Graciela? Graciela Alfaro. Ah, yo soy María pero estoy hablando por Graciela, ¿correcto? Sí. Hi, my name is Maria, but I'm talking in behalf of Graciela. I am a mom of three children. It's been a big challenge, uh, for me and I have had to stop work due to the childcare. Continúe. Yo trabajo en el campo y me he visto la necesidad de parar de trabajar porque no tengo cuidado de niños. Again, I had actually had to stop work because I have no childcare. He ido varios programas como MAU. I have been to different programs like MAU. Y me dicen que no soy elegible para el programa porque no tienen fondos. And I've been told that I'm not eligible because there's no funds. Yo no gano lo suficiente para ir a sectores privados o con proveedoras de licencia porque no gano lo suficiente. I don't have the money and I don't make enough to go to a different agency or private agency so I can get the childcare. Así que pido por favor se den fondos para todas las personas como yo que no ganamos lo suficiente. So, I'm here to ask and if you please to get the funds so we can get the assistance, not only for me but for all the parents who have child, children and need the, uh, child assistance. El cuidado de niños es una necesidad esencial para que podamos salir a trabajar. Childcare is very essential and we really need it so we can go back to work. Hoy en día todo ha subido de precio y el cuidado de niños está supercaro. Now everything's over the budget, um, everything's expensive as well as the childcare. Gracias a todos por pensar en madres como yo. Thank you for all you guys who represent us like us as, um, for childcare as parents. Gentamente, Graciela Alfaro. Graciela Alfaro.
Thank you. Moving on to Brenda Halyer, I'll allow you to unmute yourself for a minute thirty.
Good morning. My name is Brenda Halyer and I'm with the Mexican-American Opportunity Foundation. MAUF provides state subsidized childcare vouchers, center and home-based care, resource on referral services for all families seeking childcare, and for childcare and education providers. We work with a lot of families. Here is what we see. The waiting list for state subsidies are long. Many never get them. The enrollment process can be complex for families, especially for immigrants with low literacy skills. We need to make sure there are simple ways to get childcare stipends that feel safe and welcoming to all families, regardless of the language they speak and the paperwork they have to fill out. And we need more, more subsidies and more childcare spaces. It is difficult to attract new providers to open a childcare center or home. The wages are low, the business model complicated, and many can't find suitable and affordable space. To quickly help parents get back to work after the pandemic and children to recover from a difficult year, we need to meet families where they are, with the right childcare schedules that match their jobs, usually in agriculture or hospitality. Please help us as a community do this. We support the recommendations made by the Bright Beginnings Initiative. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Milpa Collective, I'll allow you to talk. Unmute yourself on the other side for a minute thirty.
Hi, good morning. Chair Askew and Board, I'm calling, um, I'm calling in the Esalen, Costinua, and Aloni people on whose lands we are on. My name is Rosara Figueroa Mendoza and I'm here to advocate for the six demands that various Monterey County organizations have been pushing since late last year. We sent y'all a letter in April. Uh, we do not need more funding for the Sheriff's Department if even the most basic necessities of human beings are not being taken care of. We need physical, mental, behavioral health, positive youth development, healing, employment, housing, fresh start programs for folks with records to begin anew. And if they would have had this from the very beginning, their basic necessities met, there would be no people having records, right? Um, in the midst of Sheriff Bernal being censured for the misuse of funds, we do not need to provide more money for this department, especially in the, uh, wave of what Graciela just said, a single mother who, who's a farm worker that needs childcare. For the folks that want a fully funded Sheriff's Department and SROs, we can actually expand our idea of public safety to move beyond law enforcement. There's therapists, counselors, mentors that could actually fill the role of an SRO. And because law enforcement has, has historically been rooted in racism and people that look like me have most been adversely affected, we can actually determine public safety as youth giving their full potential, people having nutritious food and secure housing. An equitable budget which balances the basic human needs of people is really key. Um, so with that, I hope we address the root cause, which is poverty. Uh, thank you.
Thank you so much. Moving on to Stephen Johnson, I'll allow you to unmute yourself for a minute thirty.
Good morning. My name is Stephen Johnson. I'm a board member from the Aromas Community Center Foundation, better known as the Aromas Sports Park. Um, and as you know, Aromas is in the tiny corner of, of Monterey County, uh, where we don't get a lot of services. We have to pretty much do things ourselves. Um, we have, with the, with the donated land, we've created an Aromas Sports Park, which is now operational, but it still can't pay for itself. And I know that, uh, there's always more demand for funding than there is funding. So, we're only asking for what we need, half of what we need, so we can actually do a fundraiser to put in a, uh, a tournament-grade soccer field, which will then support- to put in a tournament-grade soccer field, which will then support the entire park. We have no revenue other than the rental of the soccer fields or the rental of a pavilion, and so we have to really run it as a business. The county of Monterey was very kind in helping us to develop this, initially with the infrastructure in the early 2000s. Since that time, we've just operated on what we can raise and what we can do on volunteers. So I really ask you to be considerate and put some of the money in the very corner of the county, which normally doesn't get any. We would really, really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Moving on to Aram Coronado, I'll allow you to unmute yourself for a minute thirty.
Hey, wanna start this, everyone? Actually, good morning, everyone. This is Aram Coronado from Milpa. And I just wanted to let you all know, the Monterey Coalition wrote a six-demand letter, basically advocating for better the needs of our community. You know, I don't see privileged folks standing up saying, "We need this, we need that," but just a community which reflects the people of color in Monterey County. It's so important and so critical that we don't fail our community members, just as the stories that we've been hearing lately, or recently, of mothers not being able to have childcare or any type of childcare services. It's very important that we start supporting our next generations and the future generations to come. It's time for us to start focusing on the needs of our community. As you see around Salinas and in Monterey County, you see the lack of, you see a lot of homeless people, you see a lot of a lack of programming in our county. So it's time to reinvest and reimagine and reallocate where the budget should be going. As you all seen, you know, with the Sheriff Bernal, it's time to hold them accountable, and it's time to invest in our communities. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Moving on to Diana, I'll allow you to unmute yourself for a minute thirty. Diana?
Hello, yeah. It wasn't popping up. But yeah, buenas tardes, buenos dias. My name is Diana Carrasco. And yes, I want to acknowledge the land that we're on, the land that we are settled on, right? Aloni, Costanoa, and Esalen land. And with that, I think, and even discussing the budget, it's important to remember, it's important to remember our history, right? And like dig into it beyond borders, beyond, you know, the laws, the policies that we are discussing. Because the reality is that there are many voices who are not being, like, there's a lot of sentiment, a lot of history that is not being expressed right now. But in thinking about our infrastructure, thinking about our the care, our cultural, the need for cultural and language support in our communities. You know, when we talk about language and culture, sorry, it directly connects us to the land that we're in. And even the fact that we're currently speaking English or Spanish, there is already a disconnect with the reality of what we are navigating through, right? And so it's important to fund and reinvest in our communities in the sense that we need to support our families, our mothers, our children with a future that goes deeper than law enforcement, right? There needs to be a genuine-
Thank you. Next, moving on to Kim Stemler, I'll allow you to talk. Unmute yourself on the other side.
Is there any way Janine Chikarot could go before me?
Sure. Janine Chikarot?
Janine's on the panelist's side.
Yeah, I just unmuted her.
All right, good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Janine Chikarot, Chair of the Monterey County Hospitality Association. I'm speaking today on behalf of the Coalition of Ag and Hospitality Associations, and submitted a letter to you yesterday. In the interest of time, we had designated two speakers, Kim and myself, to represent the two largest industries in the county. The county has an unprecedented one-time opportunity to utilize eighty-four-plus million in federal ARPA funds for COVID-related economic recovery. Without doubt, the hardest hit sector of the county was, and still is, hospitality. However, this proposed budget allocates nearly all the funding to county shortfalls and projects that have little connection to COVID recovery. While hospitality was the business sector most impacted by COVID, the county's proposed budget allocates only 1.8 million to tourism marketing. We ask that the county right-size its investments in our recovery. Our jointly developed, with agriculture, proposes the county invest 4.6 million in ag, tourism, and childcare. This is a small fraction of the nearly $2 billion economic loss to our local sector. In fact, in destination marketing, Monterey County is outspent two to one by our top competitors in Napa and Sonoma. While we continue to invest inadequately, visitors and group business go to other states and other regions in California. That's happening in real time right now. We're asking the Board to right-size its investment in our sector and consider funding a robust assertive campaign that will tie tourism and agriculture together, and in doing so, bringing leisure travelers and group business back to Monterey County. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving back to Kim Stemler.
Thank you so much for your consideration. Good morning. Is it still morning? Yes, Chair, Ask You, and then members of the board. My name is Kim Stemler. I'm the Director of the Monterey County Vintners and Growers Association. I'm adding to Janine's comments on behalf of the Coalition of Ag and Hospitality Associations, and we submitted a letter to you both yesterday and a few weeks ago. The alliance of the two largest economic drivers and largest employers in the county came together to help Monterey County recover and position the entire county for future economic success. To this end, we've developed one-time strategic policy and investment recommendations to stimulate economic recovery. We've included non-budget related items like extending temporary encroachment permits for restaurants and winery tasting rooms. And we've also made ARPA-related recommendations. We support funding one-time investments to support economic recovery rather than initiating new ongoing expenditures that require long-term commitments. And then specifically, we ask the county to fund stimulus programs, including wine corridor gateway and directional signage, although there was a referral from the Board of Supervisors last year to use 150,000 in funding set aside for South County promotion to the Convention and Visitors Bureau, that money had already been spent on South County promotional campaigns, so there was no money for signage. We also asked for agriculture and tourism marketing recovery promotion budget, and to help and retain workers by funding quality of early childhood and school-age childcare for working families. And this time is going back so quickly, so thank you for your consideration. We look forward to working together.
Thank you. Moving on to Deneen Gus.
Good afternoon, Honorable Board of Supervisors. My name is Dr. Deneen Gus, and I currently serve as county superintendent. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today to ask that you consider providing funding for community-based organizations that can provide financial support to provide summer programs prioritizing homeless, foster youth, English learners, and families with the greatest socioeconomic need across the county. County financial support for CBOs that offer expanded learning opportunities would address working families' need for extended care and offer the type of programming that sparks students' enthusiasm for learning, expands horizons, and keeps them safe and active, all while fostering critical social and emotional skills. I submitted a detailed proposal for your consideration. Working collaboratively to reconnect students and accelerate learning will result in young people who feel empowered, confident, and well-equipped with the skills necessary to thrive. I also want to show my support for the Bright Beginnings proposal that would help to expand childcare access to families in need of this support. Thank you.
Thank you. And moving on to Erin Johnson, I'll allow you to talk. Unmute yourself on the other side for a minute thirty.
Thank you. Erin Johnson, on behalf of Coastal Growers Association. And we just wanted to lend our support to the sheriff's budget. The cannabis is, as you saw in the, earlier in the presentation, cannabis funds have come in that have really helped the county in the last year or two. We'd like to keep that going in the direction it is going, and I fear that that taking funds away from the sheriff's office will actually result in a lack of enforcement on the illicit market in cannabis. I'm very concerned about that. We have been successful because the sheriff's office has done an excellent job in focusing attention on illicit growers, essentially in the hills. And we'd like to keep that program going. And so we support the sheriff's office. I just ask that you put personal politics aside and focus on the sheriff's department as a whole. I've got many friends that are, high school friends that are sheriff's deputies. I've talked to them about these issues, and they do need those positions funded, and so I would just ask that you, you support the sheriff's proposal and fully fund all of the positions that have been requested, as they're not new positions. They have, they've been on the books in the past and either have vacancies and need to be filled or otherwise need to be addressed, so thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right, it looks like that is all of the public comment. If there's anyone else who wanted to speak in regards to anything on our budget, as part of our budget hearing, now would be the time to raise your hand. We're going to, I see one hand raised, so we will take a final public comment from Veronica Maramontez. Thank you for joining us, Veronica.
Hello, thank you for having me. My name is Veronica Maramontez, and I'm just here to, first, thank you guys for holding this public session for us to speak. I want to talk directly about poverty. Poverty is linked with negative conditions such as substandard housing, homelessness, inadequate nutrition, and food insecurity, inadequate childcare, lack of access to healthcare, unsafe neighborhoods, and under-resourced schools, which adversely impact our nation's children. Even heart disease studies have shown that growing up in poverty can put children at risk for heart disease in adulthood. So children feel as if they have no power, control, and their circumstances. My public comment today is really focused on our youth and our next generations and the need that they have and deserve to have for fair quality of life. Based on what we've seen in the past and our history, it's really important to understand what works and what doesn't work. And for me, what I'm seeing is having more community resources, more childcare funding, more nutritions and meals offered to our community, through our community, gives us higher results versus having other types of sources, such as the Sheriff for Deprobation Department having to come into these communities and not feeling connected in that sort of way. So my encourage and hope is that you guys can consider that and think of like the root causes of what's happening and find adjustments to how our funding is allocated to support the needs of our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Veronica. And we do have one other hand raised. If there's anyone else who would like to speak in public comment, please raise your hand now, otherwise this will be our last public comment. Edgar, sorry, I don't have the full name listed. Edgar Gutierrez?
No, it's okay, y'all. Hello, y'all. Good afternoon. My name is Edgar Ernesto Barra Gutierrez. I'm a long-term resident of Pajaros and Las Lomas in North Monterey County, and I really want to stress the importance of investing in that community. You know, a lot of the time, we're usually forgotten. And there's a big needle. There's a lot of young people who are coming up. There's a lot of older people who need help. So investing in the community is the way to go. We've continued, we've continuously seen the sheriff's budget and other budgets to be funded well and beyond their means. However, we, in those particular areas of the county, it's always been underfunded and divested from. So I'm asking for y'all to really consider what would it look like to invest in that community, invest in a well-suited youth community center where it can be a one-place, a one-stop shop where folks can attend, folks can actually be able to gather and enjoy each other's company after this long period of time where folks have been separated. You know, there's a lot of things that are going to be coming up in our community, so that an investment into mental health, housing in that particular part of the county is really important. I know I continue to hear that folks got friends, that long-term friends. Well, I got friends there, you know? I got friends there too that have been there for a long, long time, you know, old people and young people. And I really want y'all to consider those folks. A lot of the time, we're always forgotten. We're always forgotten in Pajaros and Las Lomas. So I just really want to bring that up to y'all and stress that it's important to invest in our community of Pajaros and Las Lomas. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Mariana Cervantes, I'll allow you to talk. Unmute yourself on the other side for a minute thirty seconds.
Hi, good afternoon. Thank you for having me. My name is Mariana Cervantes. I am a long-term resident here in Monterey County, specifically South Monterey County. I come from, my grandparents, Latina, first generation, that have gone to college. And I work here at the Monterey County Jail, and I'm here just providing my feedback and support into the Monterey County Sheriff's Office to continue the funding for the Programs Department. I have seen how these programs have really helped individuals who have been here, not only to recidivate, but also to form longer relationships with people, their families. And all these programs have really helped them, you know, get them unemployment or just get them into places where they never thought they would without receiving these programs and these help from these skills and trainings and a lot of just social skills and all these tools that we provide here in the county jail. So I am here to support them. I think we continue to have, to make a great impact in society. And here especially, we're giving back to the community with these programs. So I am really in favor of continuing these funds for these programs.
Thank you. Next, Milpa Collective, if it's somebody other than who has spoken before?
Yes, this is Alexis Magdaleno. I haven't spoke. Good afternoon, Board, community members. My name is Alexis Magdaleno. I'm a longtime resident of South Monterey County. I'm here asking for, you know, the same demands that we've been pushing for. I think it's important that we start investing into the infrastructure that's heavily needed, both in South Monterey County and all throughout the county. But here in South County in particular, it's very difficult to retain many of the resources that we speak about because we don't have the infrastructure, we don't have the buildings to house these folks, these resources. And a lot of people want to come work down here in Greenfield and in Soladad and in King's Stadium in Gonzales, but there's just not the infrastructure to house them and retain them. So I'm hoping that could be a priority. Oftentimes, we hear about, you know, more investment into the sheriffs. And unfortunately, that's not something that's helped our community as much as folks want to say. I've lost a lot of friends this past year, and a lot of young people, and these services, you know, for us, it's life or death. It's a real struggle down here. The last thing I'll say is I used to work at North Monterey County Middle School, and there was very little services, so I'm having a hard time understanding why folks would want to hold on to their SRO and the other services that we have in North Monterey County are very, very short and thin. So I would hope that that would be a priority. Thank you.
Thank you.
We don't see any other hands raised, and we will close public comment on our budget hearings. It's about 11:51 right now, so I'm thinking that before we start through our departmental presentations, we should break for lunch and maybe come back at 1:00. Like, if there's about an hour and 10 minutes for a lunch break, and then we'll all be fresh and ready to hear the department presentations. I want to thank everyone who joined us this morning to speak and public comment. We do appreciate your interest in the budget, your willingness to spend your morning with us, and thank you for taking the time to express the values and priorities that you would like to see incorporated into our county budget. We'll be back here at 1:00 for specific departmental presentations, and we'll work our way through as many of those as we can get through today. Thank you all for joining us.
We're going to reconvene our budget hearings. We're just making sure we've got everyone back in the room with us. Supervisor Lopez, we have you on the screen.
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, you're here, perfect. All right, and we're just looking around. Did we lose... Supervisor Leho, if you're on the attendee side, raise your hand so we can bring you back over.